And I will go ahead and call the meeting back to order on September 10th. And we have conducted all the other business on the agenda of the City Council for this evening, which leaves us with two public hearings, 11.1, 11.2, both of them revolving around 385 Main Street. For the record, it should be noted that Councilmember Taylor has declared a conflict and recused herself from both of these items, and she has actually left the building. She will not be returning this evening. Based on recommendations and review of the city attorney, we also, in case anyone is wondering, Councilmember Thomas will remain with us this evening as he has no conflicts in this issue. So with that, being noted that it is 7:34, and we were asked not to hear this item before 7:30 until we are in compliance with the request of the first applicants, me and I will go ahead and ask Mr. Morris, are you going to give the staff report, or is it Mr. Rebus?
Yes.
Pierre, good evening again. If you could begin with 11.1.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll start with some background information. A conditional use permit and site plan review application to operate a formula business land use to be located within the ground floor of the Plaza Building located at 385 Main Street. This proposed use was considered by the Planning Commission at their hearing on July 16th of this year, and was approved subject to findings and conditions of approval, which are included in your staff report. The Planning Commission Agenda packets also included the staff's report containing an analysis and background of applicable general plan goals and policies, zoning code requirements and provisions, the Sour Dough &amp; Company applicant submittal package, and public comment, and it's all contained within your packet. The Planning Commission conditionally approved the Sour Dough &amp; Company conditional use permit and site plan review requests on a 2 to 0 to 1 vote. There was one abstention. That approval did include condition number five that provided further direction to the applicant as to the commission's preferences of sign, design, color, and illumination, and then further requires that the applicant return with a signed package to the Planning Commission for approval prior to occupancy. The full action taken by the Planning Commission is provided in your staff report, and that's the findings and all the conditions of approval for both the conditional use permit and the site plan review. Subsequent to the Planning Commission's action on these applications, an appeal was filed. The subject of this appeal, or the appellant's, being Sue Taylor for the Friends of Historic Hangtown, Heidi Meyerhofer, and Brian Chase. They filed a timely appeal on July the 25th of this year of the Planning Commission's July 16th approval of the conditional use permit and the site plan review applications. Their appeal is based on six contentions, and I'll go over those quickly, and then I'll give staff's response. The first is, the proposed use is defined by City Code Section 10-1-4 as a fast food formula restaurant. Two, a fast food restaurant is not allowed, is not an allowed use in the city's central business district zone. Three, staff misled the Planning Commission and the applicant regarding the allowance of a formula business in the CBD zone under City Ordinance 1597. Four, the requested sign under the site plan review application component should have been denied or continued due to its standardized corporate architecture, not approved with design approval at a later date. Five, the request violates the California Environmental Quality Act, the general plan and zoning laws. And six, the comments submitted to the Planning Commission contained accurate statements of significant legal violations not addressed by the Planning Commission. So now moving to staff's analysis, some quick responses. The first one, the proposed use is defined by City Code Section 10-1-4 as a fast food formula restaurant. I will read Section 10-1-4. It defines a fast food restaurant as "any retail establishment intended to provide primarily short-order food service for onsite dining and/or food takeout, including self-service restaurants, except cafeterias, where food is consumed on the premises, drive-in restaurants, and formula restaurants required by contractual or other agreements to offer standardized menus, ingredients, and fast food preparation." Section 10-1-4 also defines a formula business as being "any business with a proposed or existing exterior design, appearance, colors, signage, that is easily identical, that is essentially identical to five or more other business sites using the same or similar name or identity." This definition's inclusion of the objective "any" means that every type of business using the same or similar name or identity within five or more other business sites could be a formula business. Therefore, a formula business could be, for example, a bank, a jeweler, movie theater, real estate agency, eating and/or drinking establishment, shoe store, insurance agency, fast food restaurant, mortgage lender, undertaker, juice bar, ice cream parlor, saloon, spa, yogurt shop, bike store, investment broker, hotel motel bar, and potentially many others. A fast food restaurant is not allowed use in the city's central business district, CBD zone. City Code Section 10-514B2 allows eating and drinking establishments without excluding fast food restaurants as defined by right within the central business district, exclusive of formula businesses pursuant to Section 10-514C2. As such, any eating and drinking establishment is allowed. Fast food is not distinguished in this zone. Therefore, the only analysis pertains to whether or not the formula business can be allowed under the provisions of the code. The proposed Sour Dough &amp; Company formula business use would establish a commercial food service, an eating and drinking establishment, at this pedestrian-oriented downtown location. The use would operate similarly to the previous central coffee tenant onsite and other eating, drinking establishments uses that exist within the downtown and the CBD zone that offer menu options that include sandwiches, soups, and salads, and various beverage options. The definition of a formula business includes "any business with a proposed or existing exterior design that is essentially identical to five or more businesses using the same or similar name or identity." This includes a fast food restaurant business use among others. Staff will note that the definition of a fast food restaurant does not necessarily mean that such a restaurant be a formula chain business, meaning that non-formula fast food or short-order restaurants currently exist on Main Street. Moving on to the next contention, is that staff misled the Planning Commission and the applicant regarding the allowance of a formula business in the CBD zone under City Ordinance 1597. Under the CBD regulation, under these sections, 15514C and C2, formula businesses are permitted when authorized under a conditional use permit and a site plan review. Staff's Planning Commission report contained the applicable general plan goals, policies, City Code regulations, and design criteria and guidelines within the city's development guide, and a complete copy of Ordinance Number 1597, the zoning regulations for formula businesses within the central business district, and staff's analysis. The proposed sandwich shop is a short-order food service, eating and drinking establishment business, providing for onsite and offsite dining. The proposed sourdough business brand has more than two dozen locations qualifying it as a formula business as defined. This is not the first formula business request within the CBD zone since the amendments to the City Code in 2004 regarding the formula business design criteria and conditional use permits requirements. And at this point, I just want to give just a brief background history to that ordinance, 1597. If you recall, following the completion of the Highway 50 operational improvements, the City Council amended the zoning map to change those properties, for the most part lying west of Sacramento, to the end of Main Street from Highway Commercial to the central business district zone. So it was rezoned. And then this ordinance essentially amended the CBD zone to require a conditional use permit and a site plan review for any formula business as defined in the code, to go through that before it could be established. There was the concern that with a lot of vacant properties lying west of Sacramento Street along Main Street, that could open the door for additional, the typical fast food type restaurants, the McDonald's, the Burger Kings, the KFCs, if you will. A few months after the ordinance went into effect, the Quiznos sub-sandwich applied and was approved to operate under a conditional use permit at 545 Main Street within the Roberts Hook Building, a property of zone, central business district. They operated until April of 2008. Subsequent to that, Mr. Pickle's Sandwich Shop took over the space and utilized the existing formula business conditional use permit to operate their formula business until February of 2010, and that conditional use permit has now expired. The next contention, the requested sign under the site plan review application component should have been denied or continued due to its standardized corporate architecture, not approved with design approval at a later date. The Planning Commission's findings and conditional action followed City Code requirements under the conditional use and site plan review process. Condition five of the Commission approved approval provided additional direction to the applicant as to the commission's preferences of the sign, design, color, and illumination. It further requires that the applicant return to the sign pack, returned, return to the Commission with a signed packets for approval prior to occupancy, and this action is within the commission's purview, only limited by the fact that the Sour Dough &amp; Company has a trademarked logo, and so you can't change the actual logo and change what the business's name brand is within the context of that signage, the copy, if you will. But everything surrounded, typically you're looking at a pole sign, or a monument sign, or different characteristics of how that sign is constructed, aside from the copy. To support, to support the Planning Commission's decision to conditionally approve the CUP and site plan review formula business request, the Planning Commission made findings that the request is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act as to the existing project location and site conditions, proposed signage, proposed use characteristics, consistency with the general plan, city zoning code, and the developments guide, and information contained in the public record. The next contention is that comments submitted to the Planning Commission contain accurate statements of significant legal violations not addressed by the Planning Commission. The applicants did not provide or address which statements constitute violations of law, at least at the time that this staff report was written. Subsequent to the writing of the staff report, in fact, comments received earlier today were from a Patrick, and I, and excuse me if I mispronounce your last name, Celery, and this is an attorney that's representing the applicant's appeal. And his letter states that a fast food restaurant is not permitted in the CBD zone. This is incorrect, and this time I would request that we go to a PowerPoint, so I can go through the code in detail. Sour Dough &amp; Company Appeal Analysis. We'll just walk away through the code. So this is a section taken right out of the central business district zone. This is Section B, and Section B is listing all, all the permitted uses. Just a little background, you can look at any particular zone, district that the city has, and it'll have a purpose statement. It will list all the uses that are allowed as a matter of right. It'll list all the uses allowed by conditional use permit, and then it'll have a section that addresses the development standards, setbacks, height requirements, those kinds of things. So reading here, under B, permitted uses, the following uses and their accessory uses are permitted outright: antique stores, business and professional offices, consignment stores, and we've highlighted eating and drinking establishments, government facilities, hotels and motels, institutional uses. Under the CBD zone, we list uses that are allowed conditionally, meaning that they may be used, but they would go through a discretionary process, typically through the Planning Commission, to consider the compatibility of that use with surrounding land uses, and if it has found that there are maybe some issues, that we could apply conditions of approval on that use to make it compatible, so it can be consistent and be a good neighbor. So we have bus or taxi stations. We've highlighted formula businesses, and I've previously read to you what the definition of a formula business is, and that's what is before you. Gasoline service stations, parking facilities and parking lots, places of entertainment, single-room occupancy facilities when above or below the ground floor, that's our mixed use, and used merchandise stores. So those are all the uses allowed under a CUP. And then in the commercial zone, we've highlighted the section, let's see, oh, excuse me, let me go back. So this is the commercial zone district. So this is different and apart from the central business district. Each has its own unique and distinct set of uses permitted by right, or uses permitted by conditional use permit. So we can see here all the uses that are allowed in the general, just the commercial zone include the antique store, club or association, consignment store, domestic violence shelter, hospital, sanitarium, dispensary, clinic, orchery, motel and hotel, one or multifamily dwelling units and residential service facilities and employment housing when above or below the ground floor. One sign not to exceed the allowable size established by Section 10-417 of this title. Unfortunately, I can't read what that next one is.
Pawn shop.
Pawn shop, thank you. Places of worship and accessory social activities. And then if we could just go back real quick. Professional or business office, bank, studio, places of entertainment, new and used retail sites when fully enclosed in a building. And then we've highlighted eating or drinking establishments, retail service, exclusive of fast food restaurants, and automobile sales and service. So here in the commercial zone, the commercial zone as a matter of right allows eating and drinking establishments, but pulled out and said exclusive of fast food restaurants, because it's not a use allowed by right in the commercial zone. So we move on to the next slide, where these are conditional uses. You can see a whole bunch of uses listed there, but we've highlighted fast food restaurants. Fast food restaurants in the commercial zone require a conditional use permit. So the purpose of, of staff going through the commercial zone was just to highlight the construct of what's allowed by right and what's allowed by a conditional use permit, or would be a discretion application. So the commercial zone doesn't differentiate between whether it's a formula business or not. It's only pulling out and making a special exception to requiring that a fast food restaurant would be allowed with a conditional use permit, whereas in the central business district, it pulls out possibly a larger universe of uses, so that a number of uses, if they qualify as a formula business, require a, a conditional use permit, and in addition, site plan review, mainly for the benefit of allowing the city to have greater discretion over the architectural features of that use. We can move on to the next slide. Formula business, again, I'll, I'll read, so that everybody understands. A formula business is "any business with a proposed or existing exterior design," exterior, "appearance, colors, signage, that is essentially identical to five or more or other business sites using the same or similar name or identity." So again, the sourdough, the applicant Sour Dough &amp; Company is a formula business, must have, you know, 20 or more restaurants now throughout California, and I think they're in the East Coast as well. But it's exterior design, appearance, colors, and signage. So basically, appearance and colors, they're not changing the exterior of the building whatsoever, they're just applying their, their signage onto the building. Site plan review required. So as part of the ordinance that we talked about earlier, following the rezone from Highway Commercial to CBD, and then modifying the CBD to require a conditional use permit in the CBD zone, we've also made a provision under site plan review required under that section, 10-49C10, new formula businesses and major exterior modifications to existing formula businesses within the CBD zone. Major modifications are those defined in subsection P of this section. So for example, when the Shell Station went through a major reimaging of their, of their location, they had to go through a site plan review process because of this ordinance came into being, and that was a major modification to an existing formula business. We can move on to the next slide. Site plan criteria. So this is the criteria that staff looks at, and then subsequently, the Planning Commission looks at when they review, site plan review with respect to a formula business. The site shall be planned to achieve harmony and continuity between neighbors and commercial areas to maintain historic foothill, small-town character, as opposed to suburban patterns of development. Now mind you, the site plan review would look at a development application where it's a vacant lot, they're building a whole new building. And a lot of times, we have a formula business where the entire building is a sign saying, "Look at me, I am this particular business," and you can see them from a mile away. Well, here, they're not changing anything to the exterior of the building, they're just changing the sign. The second bullet, "evolution of appearance of a project shall be based on the quality of its design and relationship to surroundings. Inappropriate, incompatible, bizarre, exotic designs and substandard corporate architecture other than registered trademarks shall be avoided." And I think we've discussed that pretty thoroughly. We'll move on to the next one. Relationship of building and site to surrounding area. Standardized corporate architecture, which involves the use of materials, textures, facades, colors, roof lines, siding, other materials and features as contrary to the city's historic small-town character. In lieu of standardized corporate architecture, formula businesses shall use the following: natural and manufactured wood siding, large timbers, varied roof lines, openings and facade treatments, brick, brick veneer, rock treatments, gridded windows, earth-toned colors in lieu of bright, glossy, reflective colors. Here again, it's looking at the building, and so, and again, it's saying, if we are to allow a formula business within the CBD zone, requires site plan review. This is the criteria that they had to follow. I will go back to my staff report. So again, his letter states that fast food restaurant is not permitted in the CBD zone. This is incorrect, and I think staff has clearly illustrated, per the construct of our code, that is clearly, is permitted only upon approval of conditional use permit site plan review. There was also mention of the design guidelines. There was a statement in there that this use is not permitted for the design guidelines. What the, what the letter writer was stating is that there is a matrix in our design guideline that would list a whole universe of different kinds of uses, and then it has the zoning, all the various zoning districts up at the top, and indicated, it would indicate which of those uses in which zone is allowed by right, or by conditional use permit or site plan review are not permitted at all. And I will admit, in fact, we would like to thank the writer of that letter for pointing out that staff had incorrectly listed that a fast food was not allowed in the CBD zone. But I want to point out that this is, the design guidelines is just that. It's, it's design guidelines that indicate the architectural, the signage, the colors, the roof lines, landscaping, and the like. It does not supplant, supersede, run counter to our zoning code. Our zoning code is the ordinance, law of the land. This is design guidelines, it has design guidelines that are a little bit more subjective, that gives guidance to staff, guidance to the decision-makers, both the Planning Commission and the council, when you're considering these types of applications. So it has always been the desire of previous planning commissioners, and we've, staff has heard this, that this make this document more user-friendly, can it have a project review process outline? We've included that. That is a matrix, this is, again, does not supplant, supersede, or run afoul of our zoning code. Staff put that together for the convenience of anybody looking at doing a project in the city where they have a quick reference. And again, we, we thank the letter, the writer for pointing that out. We will happily immediately correct that discrepancy. I also want to point out that staff, just, just for this, just for this heck of it, because this is a more recent update, we looked at our 1993 City of Placerville Development Guide. We also found that one also contains such a matrix of various uses, and whether or not it's permitted by a conditional use permit or site plan review or not allowed. Have a copy of that. I'm looking, fast food restaurants are also included in there, but we neglected to put where, whether it's allowed, not allowed, or by permit in any of the zone districts. So for whatever was a discrepancy then, it's a discrepancy now, and again, it's been brought to our attention, and we will, we will, it will please us to fix it. So with, with that, I want to move on to the options that the council has. There are three options that the City Council could take at this time. One, the council can deny the appeal, affirming the decision of the Planning Commission, conditionally approving of CUP 19-01 and site plan review application 1901, to allow the proposed formula business at 385 Main Street based on the findings that were made by the Planning Commission. Two, the Planning Commission can approve this conditional use permit and site plan review with modifications. And three, the Planning Commission could reverse the decision of the Planning Commission and deny the conditional use permit and the site plan review, and uphold the appeal. Staff is recommending that the council affirm the decision of the Planning Commission, approving the conditional use permit and site plan review to allow the formula business at 385 Main Street based on those findings that were made by the Planning Commission, and deny the appeal filed by Sue Taylor for Friends of Historic Hangtown, Heidi Meyerhofer, and Brian Chase. Staff would also request that the council make some additional SEQA findings. And these findings are, and they will be in addition to, that finding that was made by the Planning Commission is recommended by staff, and that the requested activity is exempt from SEQA per guideline section 15061B3, and that it can be seen with certainty, that there is no possibility that the formula restaurant use, along with the addition of one on-premise wall sign that would replace an existing wall sign in the same location, would have a significant effect on the environment. Staff recommends that the following additional SEQA findings be made to support the project and substantiate, at least conclude, that is, and exempt from SEQA review, and include these additional sections under SEQA. The first one is 15300.2B, as in Baker, with, and this is respect to cumulative impacts. An exemption may be inapplicable when the cumulative impact of successive projects of the same type in the same place over time is significant. So the finding is, the project proposes no physical modifications to the environment, to the natural or built environment for that matter, or the existing exterior of the building, with the exception of the replacement of a wall sign where one has existed for many decades, and the uses of similar nature to the previous uses, such as a coffee shop, a doughnut shop, and the uses that locate within the built environment. Two, we would request that you Two, we would request that you make a finding with respect to SEQA section 15300.2C, with respect to significant effect. A categorical exemption cannot be used for an activity where there is reasonable possibility that the activity would have a significant effect on the environment due to unusual circumstances. So, it was hard to find how the SEQA guidelines define what constitutes unusual, but it's probably something just more out of the ordinary. So, no unusual circumstances have been identified. The project's only physical change is a change in the sign, which has no significant impact on the environment or surrounding uses. The proposed sign would replace an existing internally illuminated sign in the same location, and the sign proposed is no different than signs all along Main Street corridor. We would request that you make another finding with respect to SEQA section 15300.2F, and this is with respect to historical resources. An exemption cannot be used for a project with may cause substantial, and I highlight that, substantial adverse change in the significance of an historic resource. The proposed project does not propose any physical change to the building, with the exception of changing the existing internally illuminated sign, and does not impact the building in any way. The Plaza Building was surveyed in 1984 for the city's historic resource inventory. Per the HRI survey, the building dates back to the 19th century. Hangtown Bakery occupied the ground floor of this building from, during the 1970s, 1980s, 1990s, and early 2000s, and was replaced by the Central Coffee that operated between 2005 and 2019. So, the sourdough is similar in use. There's no operational impacts, whatever, that somebody could reasonably state that this may cause a substantial adverse change in the significance of an historic resource. City permit records reveal that from 1979, 1989, and 2004, wall signs were authorized by the city and placed along the city's east elevation wall at a second-story level, where the now-closed Central Coffee business placed its identification sign, and where the Sour Dough &amp; Company sign is proposed. The building is not located within a designated historic district, and the building has not been designated a historic building by city council resolution. And then, thanks for your patience, I have two more. 15301, which is a Class 1 exemption pertaining to existing facilities. This proposed use will utilize an existing building, with no change or alterations of the building, with the exception of the change in the existing sign. Proposed use involves no negligible or no expansion of an existing use. There's no grading, there's no construction, there's no, I think everybody gets the picture. And then the last one is 15332. This is Class 32 regarding infill development projects. The proposed project is consistent with the general plan designation and applicable policies and applicable zoning district and its regulations. The project is replacing a like-kind business within a developed urban area with no identified value for wildlife habitat. It's an existing building. It's not a new building, it's not grading, it's not adding infrastructure, it's not connecting new infrastructure. So, with that, again, I gave staff's recommendation with the addition of the additional SEQA findings. That concludes staff's report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you very much, Pierre. I appreciate it. At this point, just so everybody understands perhaps where we're at, what Pierre has just done is presented the staff report to the city council. Since we are not the planning commission, I think it was very wise for him to take some extra time and explain all the intricacies of the various points that were presented at the planning commission, and the lengthy amount of information that has been presented in the past few weeks on the appeal. It was, I think, very useful that we could understand the exact wording of the regulations that we are using. Not how we would like them to see, or what they might have been, but what they exactly say, and what we are required to consider. So, with that, I would ask if the council members have any clarifying questions, no comments, at this time, for Pierre, or city manager, or the city attorney, on the information that he has presented outlining, and the length of it was due to the length of the items that were, are in the appeal. Any questions for Pierre at this time, on any of the information that he has presented? Cleve, did you have anything in addition you'd like to add to what Mr. Rivas's work? Mr. Dreskow?
No, I have nothing to add at this time.
Thank you, sir. Dennis, excuse me, go ahead.
Before the conversation ensues here, I'd like to acknowledge that I did have one ex parte conversation with Brian Chase, where we discussed some of the merits of the, of this, of their appeal. And he is one of the people on the appeal. And I just want to make a notation of that, so that it was public record. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions at this time? Deconations of communication. Vice Mayor.
Just one question. On the, so ordinance, for the ordinance 1597, that only refers to the exterior on the conditional use permit for a formula business. It has nothing to do with the type of business, but what the architectural features would be.
Ordinance 1597 was the ordinance that modified both the central business district, adding that, it added, I believe it added the definition of formula business in the city code. It then added the requirement that a formula business as defined would require a conditional use permit. And then, that ordinance also modified the section in site plan review that any new or existing formula business that undergoes a major change requires site plan review. So, you're getting both those applications. So, the conditional use permit primarily deals with the operation of a business, and how it affects adjoining properties, where the site plan review, that is where you're looking at the exterior, the architecture of the building, the signage, the color, the roof lines, the windows, and all of those kinds of architectural features, and that's defined under the site plan review section. So, it wasn't, it wasn't in that, in that particular ordinance, it just required that a formula business as defined would have to go through the site plan review discretionary review process.
Thank you.
That it? Okay, thank you very much. I'd just like to recognize that we have District 3 Supervisor Brian Veerkamp in attendance at the back of the meeting, as if you have not attended any meetings today, sir. Thank you for being here this evening, we appreciate your attendance. All right, well, the way this process works is, we ask the applicant to have the opportunity to speak, and since the applicant is the appellant, we will invite either Sue Taylor, Heidi Meyerhofer, or Brian Chase to speak this evening. Please come forward. I would, and you are all representing Friends of Historic Hangtown, located at 303 Main Street, Placerville. We can hopefully get a copy of that to our clerk later.
So, I'm going to address some of the things in the appeal prior to what I just handed you, that is something I'll explain later. But I'd like to start with the, this project is defined as a fast food. If you read the definition of fast food restaurant, the definition of fast food, per the city, which everybody asks, well, what's a fast food? If you look at the actual definition in the city, it's basically, I mean, a lot of restaurants downtown could be considered fast food on that first section, but it's fast food and formula. So, per the city code definition, it's those two together. So, if you could have those issues and then, and formula, just remember that. So, and this is already determined to be a formula restaurant. So, number two, the fast food is not allowed in, for use in the central business district, and I'd like to address that. The fast food restaurant is a use defined by the city code, and Pierre mentioned that this is in the design review guide. It's actually in the development guide from the city, which says, the City of Placerville Development Guide, which is an implementation program contained within the city's general plan, which is actually part of the general plan. So, if you look at this graph, which at the bottom you see, it's the City of Placerville Development Guide. It has your land uses, and right here, it's the commercial business district. These are uses that are listed. Fast food restaurant is a use, which, if you go to the grid, it says not permitted. That is pretty black and white in my mind, and it's sad that we had to probably spent 200 hours trying to find this. And why I want to bring that up, in all of the documents, if that's a use, and if you have, as Pierre showed, the different, what's allowed and not allowed under the CBD, fast food wasn't mentioned, because it's a use that's not allowed by right, and it's not allowed by conditional use, which is confirmed in your guide, which is part, which is the implementation packet for your general plan. Pierre mentioned something from 1993. This was updated, I think, in 2004 with the ordinance that was talked about with the, and, you know, we're talking many years, but this is 2016. This is after the ordinance was devised for the central business district in protecting its unique character. And so, when we talk about the staff misleading the planning commission, they addressed the project as if, 1597, that ordinance allows conditional use by right, was almost the impression, that because it's under that use, you could almost have it by right. But if you read the ordinance in the title, it's to regulate formula businesses. So, yes, there could be different formula businesses. It's not to just automatically allow any formula business that wants to come in, it's to actually regulate, to make sure that it's compatible with the district. A bank was a good example, because most banks are franchised, and most downtown communities need a bank. So, that's something that could come before the council and be allowed, because it's formula. But we're talking about something that's fast food restaurant and formula, which, according to your documents, is not allowed. So, that kind of makes the two, but the staff, we felt misled, the planning commission, because they kept saying, because it's in the conditional use as allowed, that it therefore should be allowed. And our council will explain that a little bit better. And then, lastly, the, the letter that I've given you, it pretty much explains my expertise in analyzing historic design. I'm a building designer that specializes in designing structures modeled after historic structures from the architectural periods of the 1920s to the 1960s. Most of my work from the 20s and 40s are located throughout Hafme Bay, El Granada, and some of those little towns around there. My husband and I received the 2013 Preservation Award from the El Dorado County Historical Society for our work on the historic 1853 Herrick Building on 301 Main Street. We have also restored the Hangman Street Building, which is a state-designated site. I feel that allowing a fast food formula restaurant within the central business district with its modern illuminated sign is inconsistent and undermines the unique character of historic downtown Main Street. Not only that, but having a modern illuminated sign in close proximity to the iconic bell tower will also have a negative aesthetic and economic impact to our historic town town. That is an enormous, that is a huge impact for that location, to have a fast food restaurant signage right in front of our iconic bell tower as you're coming down Main Street. And I'm really concerned about how that will be marketed in the future. Downtown, to me, is a very special and unique place, and I think, when you read the 1597, it was specifically created to protect that district. So, not only is the above an issue, but it is also unanimously determined by the city council that a fast food restaurant, as defined within the City of Placerville's municipal zoning code, is not permitted in the central business district. The City of Placerville Development Guide was approved by council persons Mark Acuna, Patty Borelli, John Creasy, Wendy Thomas, and Tricia Wilkins in 2016. You actually approved this document that I showed you. Upon finding this, it shows that the decision to the question, if a conditional use permit should be allowed for Sour Dough &amp; Company, it was already determined on June 28, 2016, when the City of Placerville Development Guide was adopted. This should have been the end of the discussion. I asked that the city council uphold the appeal and deny the planning commission approval, and actually, if you could pick option number three, to reverse the decision of the planning commission, and deny CUP 1901 and SPR 1901 upholding the appeal. Thank you. And if Heidi could come up next.
Thank you, Sue. Good evening. Heidi, if you could state your name for the audience and for the record.
My name is Heidi Meyerhofer. I'm a building owner at 376 Main Street, and I am on the appeal. I resubmitted to you today, or yesterday, the map that I generated as part of a survey of the downtown merchant community. I did this as an independent property owner by myself. I resubmitted the map with, because it has a couple of corrections. I learned that I had two businesses I had communicated with. I had a misunderstanding of how the conversation went, and so I have removed them from the support. There are 82 unique and distinct merchant businesses, by my count, in this one-block area, from Sacramento Street to Bedford. In July, I made every effort, in the 11 days that I had, to reach the owners of each of the 82 businesses. I felt at that time that I had communicated with each one, either in person, or by phone, or email, and I made the original map representing what I believed to be the sentiments of the owners at that time. I did not have 16 actual signatures of owners at the time of submission, but I did have reason to include them on the map. As I stated, I had 11 days to track down 82 owners, and not all were available to sign. Since then, I have gotten the missing signatures, or I have secured emails from them stating their desire to keep this district unique. I have also amended the map and removed two businesses that I had misunderstood as being in support of keeping the district unique. There are 61 businesses that have expressed their desire to keep Main Street unique. That is 74% of the businesses between Main, Bedford, and Sacramento Streets. I am submitting this data and the supporting documents with the owner's signatures highlighted, and email correspondence included. I'm submitting this to you as a building owner at 376 Main, who is concerned about my neighborhood, where I have committed much of my time and my treasure. I love this unique block and do not wish to see it slowly eroded into another any town USA. I heard Pierre, in his report several times, state that this is a discretionary permit. I appeal to you to use your discretion, recognizing the will of the merchants on this street. Thank you.
Thank you. Heidi, is there another speaker from the applicants, the appellant, excuse me? Good evening.
Good evening. Patrick Solori, I'm the lawyer who wrote a few letters last week and today, representing the applicants. I will be actually fairly brief. First, with respect to the development guidelines that Mr. Rivas addressed, I think that his treatment was dismissive and actually not accurate. If you look at the ordinance that is included in the packet that I attached to today's letter, Resolution 8434 specifically says, "Whereas the preparation of a development guide is an implementation program contained within the city's general plan." Well, everybody knows that the general plan is a constitution of a city, and that trump zoning. So, clearly, this is implementing, interpreting, applying the general plan, and to simply dismiss it as some kind of clerical error is, at best, misleading, and I think it's just flat-out wrong, because there are general plan land use designations, and applicable uses with the general... uses with the general plan designation, and then there's zoning. This is, quote, "an implementation program within the general plan," and it is clear as day, and it distinguishes between a fast food restaurant and other eating establishments And as I explained in the letter, there is really not much argument that this is a fast food restaurant as defined by the zoning code, because it's a, quote, "formula restaurant," and it includes a, quote, "standardized menu." Both of those are elements of a fast food restaurant under the code. So at minimum, there needs to be a meaningful, meaningful analysis of why this was missed by staff, not properly reported to the Planning Commission, and analyzed in meaningful findings that actually apply the law to the facts here. But even if we assume that this is a formula business for which there is discretionary authority over this project, there is ample authority to, and reason to deny this. I do want to clarify another, what I believe to be an inaccurate statement regarding the ordinance 1597 regarding formula businesses. The question asked was, is this ordinance intended to just regulate the exterior of these businesses, the buildings, or their operation? And in fact, I'm looking at the language of ordinance 1597 right now, and I will read one of the recitals, quote, "Whereas, the City Council finds that these policies are necessary to preserve the unique and historic character of the city's Central Business District, including regulating the aspect of businesses, services, and merchandise which reflects the history of the community and which has become a cornerstone of the tourist industry, is an important component of the city's overall economy." So clearly, the intention of this ordinance is not just to regulate the exterior facade of buildings, but to actually regulate what types of businesses themselves are allowed in this historical district. Now specifically, with respect to the, this body's discretionary authority, I wrote a letter last week, I believe on the 5th, because in my experience doing this for almost 20 years, there's sometimes a little confusion about what it means to have discretionary authority to deny applications because it happens so infrequently. And in fact, there is only one rationale that's required. It's not necessary to go through all of the elements of a particular zoning district, all the findings required for CUP approval, and find, you know, every single one is not met, or even a preponderance of them. All that's required is one, and it's a general health and welfare standard, and that is sufficiently broad to encompass whether a project is out of character with its setting. And there's numerous, there's numerous cases, and I cited them in my September 5th letter, which state that character of a proposed use within its setting, or inconsistency with its setting, is a legitimate rationale to deny a permit. And you have seen many letters already submitted, which indicate that it is out of character with this historic district. I think even the local newspaper indicated that. And quoting the Harris case, quote, "It is appropriate and even necessary for the agency to consider the interest of neighboring property owners in reaching a decision whether to grant or deny a land use entitlement, and the opinions of neighbors may constitute And again, the Guinane case, where a permit may be denied, even where there is technical compliance with the zoning and building codes, if the agency determines that the proposal is, quote, "not in character with the neighborhood," that has been upheld as a sufficient reason to deny a conditional use permit as here. And I was actually pleased to see that there are no specific findings being proposed by staff, because in my experience, sometimes that makes decision makers feel compelled to go along with those findings recommended or previously drafted by staff. And so I just want to reiterate that, and I understand that this may be the policy here, to make the determination and direct staff to subsequently come back with written findings supporting the decision that this body makes, and I encourage that here. I encourage you to listen to all the comments, read the letters, make the determination, and then direct staff to make findings regarding whether there is sufficient reason to find that this project is out of character with the neighborhood. And then my final point, turning to the, what's called the common sense exemption, which now has been supplemented by staff with some additional exemptions, sequo, exemptions, basically. There's been two cases recently that have come out, which directly address this issue, and have held that when you're dealing with a historic area, aesthetic impacts, separate from whether there's a negative impact on the historic resource itself, whether there's an aesthetic impact in this historical area can be construed as a significant impact under SEQA, and that lay testimony, so long as it's based in facts, and here, we have facts, right? We have, it's a modern sign, we have evidence indicating that they can't change it because of trademark or contractual obligations, it's self-illuminating, it's in a very prominent location. These are facts that go to the aesthetic impact, and that can be a significant impact, which takes us out of both the common sense exemption, as well as these other categorical exemptions that are now being relied upon by staff. And in fact, the fact that the Planning Commission felt compelled to reserve its discretionary authority over the signage issue is itself evidence, or supports, a fair argument that there will be, that there will be an aesthetic impact. If the Planning Commission didn't think that there was any possibility of an aesthetic impact, why would it take it upon itself to review that at a later date? And as I indicated, and I don't want to get too hyper-technical here, but it is dividing up the environmental review here. It's saying that one of the more important issues here can be deferred until a later date, and that's not allowed. And then finally, the failure to analyze an impact frankly opens up, and this is what case law says, it opens up the possibility of a fair argument of a significant impact. Basically, an agency can't say, well, we didn't analyze that issue, so there's no way it could possibly be an impact. The cases say, no, you have to do a good faith effort at analyzing an impact, and you can't just throw your hands up and say, we haven't looked at it, so therefore, there's no impact. And so I would encourage this body to make the determination that, one, its development guideline does in fact mean something, and that it is a fast food restaurant, and on that basis, find that it's not allowed, but then also exercise its discretionary authority and say, hey, you know, to the extent it's unclear, and to the extent that it may be characterized as a formula business, we're exercising our authority to determine that it's out of character and deny the requested CUP on that basis. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I don't think we have any. Thank you, sir.
Very good.
Sue, did you have any final comments that you'd like to offer? All right, I wanted to extend that to you. Heidi, did you have any other final comments that you would like to offer?
And thank you for this second opportunity, because it hit me when I sat down that I didn't mention this. The conversation about simply replacing one sign with another, I think, is disingenuous. The one sign that has been up there was unique and is not replicated anywhere. We are replacing it with a sign that is easily recognizable, and will become even more recognizable in the very near future. This is about keeping the unique character of our downtown, and I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you very much.
Can I reserve the right to speak after the comments are given?
I'm going to say, not at this time, because we don't have any idea how long those comments are going to go, so.
As the appellant?
If we have a question for you, though, would you be available to answer it for us?
Yes.
Great, that would be great.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask the question of a, an appellant, of the appellant?
I'd like to hear from Sour Dough &amp; Co., if someone's here representing them, actually. But so.
I can wait.
Mr. Driscoll?
What was your question? Go ahead.
For the attorney.
Let's let him get back up to the podium.
Thank you. Can you define what would be, I think you mentioned historical character that, in terms of SEQA, can you define that for me, how it would erode historical, like, the character?
Well, basically, it would draw a contrast between the historical elements, the historic construction methods, with this modern, glossy, shiny, self-illuminated.
And if it wasn't?
I'm sorry, if it wasn't what?
If it wasn't illuminated, because we haven't even talked about that.
Well, that's actually a really good question, which should have been the subject of some meaningful analysis.
But beyond that, so is there anything beyond the sign?
I'm not aware.
In terms of historical character?
In terms of the aesthetic impact?
In regards to SEQA.
That's my understanding, is that it's primarily, if not entirely, the sign and the contrast with the historical construction and design in the area.
Right, because we've already said that they're not changing anything else, so it's just a sign.
Again, that's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Good clarification, thank you. Now I would like to invite the Sour Dough representative to address the council. You have heard, and you certainly have sure read, the appeal that has been filed, and so, good evening. If you could please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mayor Acuna and council members. My name is Dana LeBlanc. I am the applicant for Sour Dough &amp; Co. at 385 Main Street. I do appreciate everybody's feedback and input. That's a big part of the process of making this work for the community. Strictly, I am here for the community. I'm from this community. I spent 35 years in this town. My kids are both born here. I've had businesses here, so there is some talk on the street that I'm an outsider. I don't buy it by any stretch. I want to address a couple of questions, or points that were made in the presentation tonight. Firstly, to have the map that Heidi presented to you, a second map, it was not presented to me. I challenged the first map. I certainly do challenge the second map. I haven't seen it. We went from 70% to 74%. I have talked to owners. I took the time to now go back and meet with some of the owners. As I mentioned in the Planning Commission meeting, I did not get a chance to get out and meet with them. There's some very, very unhappy people in this town with how this whole case was presented, the sort of one-sided approach to it. Believe me, I have been here 35 years, and I knew several of the people, and they were surprised to meet me, and they had some good feedback. There's some great, great businesses in this town, and I have a lot of respect for the people who've been here a lot of years and built their businesses up. There was a couple of people that said they wanted their names taken off of the list, that they were high-pressured, that they were strong-armed, railroaded to say, into signing these documents. So I challenged those documents at this point. I can give you a couple of names, if you prefer, to provide that correct and, you know, accurate information. Let me know if you want to hear any names.
Go ahead.
Okay. Lisa Ann Jones, she has a business here, I believe it's called the Well-Hung Collective Art Gallery. She said, "I asked specifically for my name to be removed from that list." I don't know if it's on your current list or not. David Cody, who has Jack Russell Brewery, says, "I did not sign this." I don't know if he wrote a letter. He said he might like, get some time to write a letter to you, but he says he wants his name removed. The wine smith sent a letter into the city. They said literally that they were put on a list that they never anticipated being on. So I really challenge the accuracy of this information that's being presented to you tonight and is not being presented to me. Okay? In terms of the historical part, I don't know how to address that. It's kind of between the city and the people that are challenging that. I would present to you that the inside of our building is very much in line with the historical concepts of Placerville. I also would present to you that the signage that we have re-presented, and it's not what is posted out on the internet, and that was originally presented because the Planning Commission did ask for additional signage, has been provided. So I challenge that as well, to say that it is very historic in nature. We spent a lot of time and effort getting with our designers, and I think the city will be quite pleased with what we can present. Particularly of importance to me was a letter that was posted to the city August 29th. This one struck me as probably the most important part of this whole discussion. It is from an individual who was a community director in Placerville from the years 2004, '05, and thereafter, Mr. Steve Kelfi. I'm just going to read a very small section of what he says here. "As Community Development Director, 2004 and '05, and thereafter, I am obligated, obliged to provide factual comments from this perspective regarding the matter of Sour Dough &amp; Co.'s request to locate downtown. The issue of a formula business and the Lower Main Street rezon was one, which was initiated by me. It was done concurrent with the Highway 50 Operational Improvement Project underway at that time, and the reality that the Lower Main Street and Placerville Drive connector artery would be important circulation slash land used thereof. In light of this, I felt that advanced planning was appropriate that would provide the Planning Commission and the City Council additional land use and design tools, which would give them the guide for the transformation of Main Street, generally west of Sacramento Street. Acknowledging that this transformation of that area has not really happened, the potential remains. This was the intent of that process and the map slash code changes proposed and subsequently adopted in 2005. I can say without question that the intent was never to unreasonably stymie a formula business from tenancy in the downtown core area. In fact, many have, past and present. I have read both the appeals which have been submitted in opposition to Sour Dough &amp; Co. proposal to locate downtown. In his opinion, both are short of merit and full of fear. Absent of profound physical change to the area, the proposed formula business should be welcomed, economic enhancement to the already stellar and vibrant downtown. Discount fear and welcome this business. Thank you for your attention." Here's a gentleman who wrote this code. He was a very large part of making these parameters for you to work off of. I was told by the city, all you need is a conditional use permit and a site plan review, which we have done. So I challenge the contest of this, and I don't quite understand. I feel like I'm in a lawsuit against something that I want to bring to this town. I just don't get it. So I give everybody a chance to speak their mind, but I certainly wanted to take a moment and speak fine.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Thank you. All right. I'm going to go ahead and, is there any, let me ask this question. Are there any questions for staff at this point in what's been presented? All right, I'm going to go ahead and open the public comment on this item, and invite any member of the public that wishes to address us on item 12.1. Please come forward. Please state your name for the record, and we are now going to institute a three-minute time limit on comments.
My name is Nelson Enos. I've got about 50 years in the restaurant business, anything from a large corporate setting to a deli operation. Anyhow, I moved to this town three and a half years ago, and getting familiar with the downtown and so forth. the downtown and so forth, I found that, you know, it seemed to me like the restaurant business down there was somewhat lacking. And I nosed around, I checked with several businesses and perhaps to see if they were willing to sell or some sort of get a different type of operation in there. And I haven't been successful at that at all. So, I thought what they really needed downtown was like a deli operation. And I talked with some various people, some owners, some customers and so forth, and asked them if something like that would appeal, and they said, "Oh, yeah." He says, "I'd like to be able to get a really good sandwich down here, or something else, a good soup or whatever." So, I... Since this came open, I just put together something, and the purpose of that was to fill a need, I thought, that there was down on Main Street, or it was like a hole or what was, what people would really like. And so, I had at one time a place I called Nelson's Pantry, and it wasn't just a sandwich operation. We did other things. We did salads. We had, got some French bread in for sandwiches. And we had a variety of meats and cheeses and so forth of a good quality, and had a lot of sides. We had a salad, a deli case with salads in it. And like, we had potato salad, coleslaw, macaroni salad, cottage cheese, pesto salad, red beans and rice, and we had some other things, too, that we dressed up a nice deli counter. In addition to that, we had special offerings, like, we had a taco bowl with Texas green chili in it, beef stew with garlic toast and a side salad. I had special sandwiches. I had the Cubano sandwich, for instance. There were panini sandwiches. I had salad plates, and I had desserts. We made a cheesecake that was a New York-style cheesecake.
I'm gonna need you to wrap up your comments, unfortunately.
Yeah, okay.
How this relates to the central site?
Yeah. Well, how does this relate to that? I'm saying I'm presenting a separate context, that if you had the place called Centro Deli, for instance, there would be no conflict in signage. There would be no conflict with any of these issues that you brought up here tonight. Would be no conflict whatsoever. It would just go in, and it was something that the people I know would really like to have there.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for your time.
Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on point 1?
So, my name is Suzanne Kennedy, and I've lived here in Placerville for 33 years. And I love the downtown. I love... I liked what it used to be, but I love what it is now. I think it's really come a long way. But I have to drive down the hill. I have my own business, and I have to drive down the hill all the time. Most of my business is in the valley. And I keep hearing that this is a fast-food business, that Sour Dough is a fast-food business. And I'm not exactly sure what determines fast food, but one of the things I do know about it that I just learned recently is that when you order a sandwich at Sour Dough, they bake your bread then, not before, but when you order your sandwich, it's baked fresh. I go out of my way, and have for years, because I've eaten at the Sour Dough in El Dorado Hills for many years, I go out of my way, sort of plan my day, if I can, around some of the Sour Dohs that are available, because I don't like fast food. And I know that it's healthier for you to eat what they offer. Sour Dough is actually a healthier bread than regular bread. And I really wanted to comment to the attorney. He kept bringing up the character. One of the things I loved about Sour Dough, besides the great food, was the character of the place. It really felt turn of the... It felt like it was an 1800s gold rush environment when you walked in. It has old barn wood, realistic, not fake barn wood, but real barn wood inside. The design of it, and I'm a designer, by the way, the design of it was very appealing to me. So, when you go inside of one of these places, you feel like you're stepping into an 1800s building. So, the inside and the outside, I think, will be a complement to our downtown, not a detriment to it. And I also learned something recently, as I followed this story, that I wanted to share with everyone, and that is that Sour Dough has been around for a long time. And I think it was even Dana that shared the story with me, and I was just so impressed one day when we were chatting, that the gold miners actually used to carry the sour dough fermented yeast in their packs from San Francisco so that they could make their bread here, because they coveted it so much. So, as far as bringing character into the downtown, it is the 1800s. That's what Sour Dough is. So, I don't know why everybody has a big problem about this.
Thank you for your comments. Is there a number... Excuse me, another member of the public wishing to address the council?
My name is Danika Olivo, and my husband and I own a building up at 643 B Street, which I'm sure if any of you have been there, you realize that we put a lot of money into preserving the historical character of the building. So, we still own the building. We own another house in Placerville. We've been here over 20 years. We don't live in Placerville, but we have a business in the basement of that building. And the character of this town means an awful lot to us. I love what this lady just said. She said a lot of what I was going to say. Have any of you ever eaten at one of these Sour Dough places? I hadn't when I first came here to the planning commission, because I did come to speak about it also, but I've since been into one of these Sour Dough locations, and I find them absolutely charming, full of character, excellent product. I'm now addicted to their lemon cookies. And I just think that you are all considering something here that you would like... You want to add something good to Main Street, and I can understand that. And I really congratulate all of you for putting so much work and so much effort. Even the naysayers, I mean, I hear them. I'm glad they're there, because they're keeping the character of this town. But I think this is... They're missing the point. They're not seeing what this is. It's a rather unusual business. It's fast food. It's formula. It's got lots of character, and it's perfect for Placerville, and it's perfect for that spot, because there's always been some kind of a bakery there. And I think this will be more appropriate for that spot than the other businesses that have been there. I also drove down Main Street when I came here tonight, and I saw three empty spaces on that side of the road on Main Street. To me, nothing looks worse when visitors come to town, and they want to take a picture of the bell tower, and there's an empty space there. That, to me, is an awful lot worse than seeing something as attractive as this Sour Dough business I know will be, because I understand they've agreed to change their sign, and it's not going to be lit. It's going to be the way that people in Placerville want it. So, I would highly recommend that you let them do this business, and I assure you, a lot of those people that were probably talked into signing against it will be in there for their sandwiches every single day for lunch. When we had Sequoia, one of our biggest problems was getting people in and out on time for lunch, because you only have a certain amount of time. This will be one of the most popular businesses among the people who live and work in this area. So, please approve it.
Thank you.
Hello.
Good evening.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Okay, I'm Ruth Michelson, and I'm a building owner at 352 Main Street, and I'm also a business owner at 352 Main Street. And since we're talking about how long we've lived here, I've lived here 35 years, I guess I came to town when Dana did. So, what I wanted to say tonight was, you know, I look to you as the leaders of this city. We are your constituents, and you make the decisions, and you have a big decision here to make tonight, and you can make the decision as you see fit. You've heard arguments on either side. So, being a building owner, I made an investment in this town, a big investment in buying my building. And, you know, the signatures on this petition, you know, give or take. It doesn't really matter if it's five-plus, five-minus, 10-plus, 10-minus. There's many of us here who have invested in this historical town with the understanding that the draw was the nature of the town, and that's why people come to get away. And I would just hope that you, as our leaders, would listen to the constituents that you have already who have made the investment, whether they own the building or whether they're businesspeople renting, that our voices, whether there's 40 of us, 50 of us, or 60 of us, should count, that we feel we want to keep things and preserve things as they are to continue to draw locals and tourists alike to this precious place that we have. I mean, it's not going to be the end of the world, I know, if Sour Dough should come in. That's not going to be the end of the world, but it sets a precedence. And I think there's enough various, you know, general plans and development plans and this and that. I used to be an engineer, worked for the county, I'm familiar with all of these things that give the idea that we want to preserve what we have. So, I ask that you consider that, consider your constituents versus one person who wants to come in versus the 40 or 50 people or more that are business owners and building owners that are saying, "We feel that this would compromise what we have." Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council? Good evening.
Hi. I'm Max Storten. I am a resident of Placerville and an ex-restaurateur. I had nine restaurants at one point, so I know a fair amount about the food business.
Hey, could you pull... There we go. Thank you.
Does that work better?
I think so.
Yes?
There we go.
Okay. So, I did go and have lunch at Sour Dough and watched their operation. I think it's inappropriate for the location that's proposed. I think it would be a great business farther towards Broadway. There's a lot of places. It might even go in the old district attorney's building, which I know we're trying to figure out something to do with that. What I don't like about this business coming in is that it is fast food. It is very generic, and it's going to become very well-known. It's expanding. If you look at it, they're opening three locations at this point on the East Coast. So, the signage, everything else will become very recognizable, and I don't think it's in keeping with how the town is developing. I also am very concerned, and I work as part-time parking enforcement in town, I think this business is dependent on having people come in and pick up their orders. I sat and watched who comes to this. It's a traffic business. Where is all the parking gonna go? They didn't ask for tables outside. There's tables outside their location on Missouri Flat. So, to me, I'm like, mm, this looks like a bit of a problem. I really welcome any new business coming in, but I think a unique business is much more appropriate. And to me, yes, it's nice to have a sandwich, and yes, they are baking their bread. So does many other sub-businesses. And it was good, quality food, and I have no argument with that at all. But I do think it's inappropriate, and I think you would be well-advised to at least put this on hold. I also talked to an awful lot of people in town, because I live in town, and there's a lot of people very much upset about this. And even on the planning commission, I remember one of the commissioners saying, when he was arguing to be elected to that position, that old Placerville is really about the tourists. No, it's not. I live down here. I know the people that... Our family is extensive in Placerville. They shop, eat, and really support downtown Placerville. And we're not very supportive of this particular business in this particular location, even though I think it's a very good business. I think it's not a bad model at all. I just think it's inappropriate for where it's proposed.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council? Good evening.
Good evening. Evelyn Veer, Camp Placerville. I have only two themes. First of all, I would like to just briefly respond to the lady who gave many kudos to Sour Dough. This past weekend, I wanted to... Decided I needed to know what a Sour Dough sandwich was, so I went for the experience on Off-Missouri Flat Road. I totally agree that the bread was wonderful. I totally agree that it was produced in fairly short order. I've never had less meat in a meat sandwich, and I would say that the sandwich was totally overpriced. That's an aside. I will not dwell on that. At the planning commission meeting, one of the Sour Dough representatives said, "We're a support system for our people." And I'm not quite sure who our people are, but I'm going to hypothesize that our people who are being supported are the management owners, which, of course, is totally reasonable. But why I raise this question is that in the last two weeks, a former employee of Sour Dough approached me to tell me something about her experience of working for Sour Dough, and I would be really happy to have a response from the Sour Dough representatives, because I understand that each franchise may be different, will have different management, and so there will be different circumstances. But the things that this particular woman said to me were that the wage is below minimum wage. Because people work only four-hour shifts, and a lot of the work hours are supplemented by high school students, there are, yeah, there are no benefits. Employees must qualify for welfare. They have no health benefits. So, basically, she was saying that, yeah, it's a below-minimum-wage place to work. And I'm assuming that their staff will come from the city of Placerville or our environs, not the city as a legal entity, but from our surrounding area. I wanted to know if I could... If her comments were supportable, so I went online to see if there were employee comments. And I will just read you a few of them, because my time has run out. You'll be glad to know. One, and I'll just give you a brief overview. One person said, "It's a steady, relaxed work, a place to work," but she also emphasized that it's a great place for high schoolers. Somebody said, "It's okay. This place wants you to give out quality food in the timing of a McDonald's worker. I'd say the job is okay if you're a high schooler who needs a part-time job. Check it out, but the pay is definitely not worth it." And it goes on. Several of the comments are very derogatory of management, but not consistently. Some are positive about management, so it's very much a matter of where people... Where the franchise is located. But the consistency is that it's minimum wage, there are no benefits, and people must be on welfare. They can't get second jobs because of the timing of the required placement of... In the center of the day, they don't... They can't get a second job to support themselves. And I would love to hear from Sour Dough on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Evelyn. Is there another member of the public wishing to comment on this? Please come forward. Good evening, if you wouldn't mind stating your name for the record.
Hello. My name is Greg Long. Me and my wife have been doing business in Placerville since 2011 in the restaurant business. I urged the city council to vote no on Sour Dough &amp; Co. Not that I have nothing against them, but I think that there's... Not that I have nothing against them, but I think that there's more important things that are at stake here. It's not about having great bread here brought to Placerville. It's about bringing big business here. When we bring big business here, and they have multiple locations, like thirty-two locations, there's many factors that go into this with, as far as taking away from our local economy with microeconomics and having, putting the money back into Placerville and keeping Placerville how it is. Also, opening the door to a big business such as with thirty-two other locations, I looked at the, there's many of them coming soon, you're opening the door for other big businesses. And if I want to go anywhere else in the world, anywhere else in the United States, I can experience that. But what I've grown to love about Placerville, being here since 2011, is that we have a community here that's unlike any other community, especially on the Main Street Business District. So I really appreciate having a place that's unique and where there's small families. When you have, when you have big businesses come in, there's franchises and other business things that take away from the community. It takes away from the product. There's, it takes chips and chips and chips out of things. Whereas people who have a mom-and-pop businesses, they can actually provide some of the best quality products, because they don't pay those overhead costs. So they're able to provide great labor, great food, great service, and everything that there has to come. So that's all I had to say. Thank you, and I urge you guys to vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Another member of the public wishing to comment? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Nutting. I was born right around the corner in Marshall Hospital. I'm as local as you can get. Also, my four-year-old son was born at that same hospital. And part of what I see with this town and the beauty of it is its uniqueness. I have been very blessed in my life to be able to tour a lot of the United States, and in touring, I was able to go to a lot of historic districts and places along the same era of our time. I can tell you, the places that I filled up on gas were the Burger Kings, and I kept moving, and I don't remember them. The places I remember are the places that had structures that spoke with beauty, things that you could see the drive and passion. When I left Placerville, I left looking for a new place to live, and as I discovered all these towns, there was something about it that I was trying to figure out what it was I loved. And then one day, I realized it's Placerville that I was looking for in all these towns. And that's what drove me back here, back to my community, back to my home, and back to my town that I adore. And to think that my son will grow up in a place with such historic value, I could not be more proud. When I run my business, I run it, the Hangman's Tree Ice Cream Saloon. I run it where we have the opportunity to talk to a lot of tourists about why there are so many businesses here in Hangtown, and why the name Hangtown is up and down the street. I get the opportunity to explain to them the historic value and worth of our town. And I get them saying, "Thank you, and I will come back to see you." The other thing that I get to see daily is the children in our community. I have watched children grow throughout the years of my store and come back again and again, and I watch them as they slowly be able to see over the countertops and be able to see into the ice cream, whereas before, they used to be held. I've gotten to have family bonds with community members through this business. I don't want it to become a wash, where any fast food business can come in here and turn it into a chain business where people stop, get their gas, get their meal, and keep going to Tahoe. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council?
Good evening, Kirk Smith. My perspectives are easy to understand, the basis for them. Our family has property in town, including certainly on Main Street. My parents, born and raised here, spent more than sixty years helping large numbers of people out in business, as well as should be able to afford the first homes. And they did that by providing very affordable rent, cheap, and under exceptionally easy terms, like a handshake and a first month's rent. The character of this town is important. So one of the simple issues is, where does this stop? If you're going to go for this kind of amorphous policy, what's going to be next for us? Are we going to have McDonald's at the Empire Theater Building, or Starbucks? That's what you're going to have. So my provision will address some other issues when you get to that point, but just note that one thing that's troublesome is the presentation, the way these proceedings are going, it's already stacked in a certain direction. First of all, the way it's captioned, it says, "To affirm the decision of..." That's not what it's about. You're here for a hearing on an appeal. It is not, and yet you had a staff, it was an advocacy piece, that's not analysis, a half hour to characterize this case. You wouldn't, the applicant doesn't need to be here. We have a great advocate, you know, paid for by the city. So that's one of the things that's troublesome. Again, as far as helping people out in business, one of those was Dana about three years ago on attendance, so I'm glad to see that kind of success around. Anyway, I know that for my appeal, we'll get to that later, it's discharacterized, and that was all throughout that first half hour. So I don't know how you can be able to process this as wisely and easily as would have been the case if it had been done differently.
Thank you for your comments. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council? Good evening.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Tim Taylor. I'm here to state my position in opposition to the proposed formula business fast food chain store near the symbolic bell tower in the center of downtown Historic District. As an owner of two downtown historic buildings and a downtown merchant, I request the City Council to consider the following reasons for not approving the proposal. The applicant's proposal will harm the historic experience of Main Street and draw to Placerville. The applicant's proposal will harm our efforts in continuing the preservation of history for the future generations to come, and the applicant's proposal will harm the uniqueness and the feels-like-home experience of downtown Placerville. In my undertaking to restore two downtown historical buildings, I appreciate the support I receive from other business owners. I feel a sense of community and support and inclusion in helping to preserve the historic downtown Placerville. I am also the president of the Placerville Downtown Association. The downtown merchants were polled, and over seventy-four percent opposed the proposal, the proposed fast food formula restaurant. They felt this would cause damage to the uniqueness of downtown Placerville should this conditional use permit be approved. I believe a fast food formula restaurant with its modern illuminated sign specifically planted directly in front of the iconic bell tower is inconsistent with the character of the historic downtown and will have negative aesthetic impact on this historic downtown. Together as a group of mom-and-pop businesses, we have succeeded in creating a brand for downtown as a unique business district. Introducing a fast food formula restaurant downtown, especially in front of the bell tower, will cause harm to that brand. To allow such would cause irreparable harm to the uniqueness and impact the aesthetics of the central downtown district. These existing downtown businesses have invested countless hours and dollars in their business. It is not right that the council ignore the wishes of these sixty-plus established businesses to make an exception for one business. To ignore your merchants, to ignore the aesthetic impact, to ignore the damage to the uniqueness of downtown, and to ignore your own code and regulations is not good governance. I ask that you approve the appeal and deny the Planning Commission's site plan and conditional use permit for this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council? Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you. Just quickly on the signatures. My name is Vicki Christensen, resident since nineteen seventy-nine. Just a note on the signatures. There, as there was not a lot of time, I was asked to be clerical support as per, to make sure that everyone did get polled and walk the streets, to make sure that people were contacted and that their votes and their signatures were real. And so I just want to add that, that that did happen, and I was there as witness. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wishing to address the council on this item? Please come forward. Good evening.
My name is Sherry Wehage, and I'm a resident of Placerville. I'm also, I share my time between San Francisco and Placerville, have a home in both places. And so I am fortunate to see, in San Francisco, I've watched neighborhoods go from, one similar to Placerville, to a certain store going in, which is a fast food or, you know, part of a formula. And I've watched neighborhoods in San Francisco just change very quickly to places I used to love, because they were really unique little areas in San Francisco, to places now I just, you know, you say, "Well, you want to go over here?" And the people basically just say, "Well, might as well just go to a mall." And I chose Placerville. My sister moved here. My partner and I moved here. I chose it for the reason that I loved of San Francisco, those little areas that I used to love going to, the mom-and-pop grocery stores that had that wonderful smell and the different little bakeries and things. I'm seeing, I've seen it completely disappear in San Francisco, and I'm seeing this trend going on, and I, let's keep this real short, I just hate to see that happen in Placerville, because I chose this city for its uniqueness and its charm. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Steve Anderly, and I wanted to tell you that Placerville Main Street has an asset that you can't really put a number on, and that asset is charm. What this town has is charm. The Carrie House Hotel is charming. Holiday Inn Express is not. An ice cream from the Hangman's Tree is charming. From Baskin and Robbins, it's not. A hamburger from the Old Town Grill, the Old Town Grill is charming. A Five Guys is not. A sandwich at the Main Street Meltzer's, that's a charming place. As good a sandwich as sourdough might be, sourdough is not charming. Once lost, it's almost impossible to get back, much like a reputation or integrity or trust. Once charming is gone, it's gone, and this town has a lot of charm, and I hope it stays that way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on this item?
Good evening. My name is Diana Anderly, and by way of background, I have over thirty years' experience as a professional planner. I'm a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, the Association of Environmental Professionals. I graduated with a master's degree from the University of Southern California in planning. I tell you my background just to add some credibility to what I have to say. I had the clerk distribute this to you so that ahead of time, not so that you'd have to read the whole thing, but that you will understand what I have to say is accurate. I'm not going to wave something at you to say, "This is what it is. This is what your general plan says." I will not try to exceed five minutes, but I don't, I will not be bringing up things that haven't been brought up before. And one of the major issues that I find is that once the zoning ordinance was adopted or changed to allow the formula restaurants and such, that's the zoning ordinance, but you know that the general plan is your overriding document. That is your, that exceeds everything that you might find into the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance must be consistent with the general plan. And one of the mandates in the general plan for the Central Business District, and you'll read it in front of you, "Provide a special review process to preserve the historic nature of the designated commercial area." That process was never carried out. They shouldn't be looking at any Quiznos or any current application until they take a look at it. The general plan mandated it. The City Council at the time thought it was very important. As I read the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting, I see that the City Council has asked to, the staff, to agendize the Planning Commission to discuss regulation of formula businesses within the Central Business District and provide recommendations. Little bit late, but finally catching up with decades-old mandates that should have been done some time ago. I think that this is inconsistent and premature, and shouldn't be looking at these things without carrying out the business that your general plan says that you should. The second thing that I would say with the general plan, while I find it inconsistent, is that they're supposed to differentiate the downtown from all other land use designations because of its unique character. Talks about character, and it doesn't talk about structure. So when the Planning Commission made the finding that this would be, should support the use permit, it said it'd be located in a pedestrian-oriented downtown. Big deal. It would serve local residents, sure. Workers within other businesses, mhm. Professional offices, and visitors. That could apply to anything. If this is your finding for sourdough, why don't you just bring in any other type of business and apply this to it? Has nothing in the discussion to the Planning Commission, nothing in the conditions that reflect what the real meat of this, what everybody's talking about. Does this belong here, especially in front of the bell tower? So, I mean, it's the most obvious place there it could be, and I've got some pictures there of what I saw of a sourdough where the materials were stacked up against the window as you walked in. The next thing I would just like to talk about zoning for a minute, and that is that the state of California and most of the cities have exclusionary zoning. If it's not called out in the zone, it's not allowed. I think you have the perfect right to challenge the planning director with his interpretation of what it means, but if you look in other sections of the zoning ordinance, such as the highway commercial, it specifically calls out fast food.
Can I ask you to wrap up your comments, please?
Yes, I will. Okay.
Because we really only go three minutes.
Okay.
And everybody has been very respectful of CV.
Yes, I'll try to be, I'll wrap it up.
Thank you.
But I, let me say this, that I've challenged you to take a look at the pictures I've taken of sourdough and the other fast foods. It looks just the same. And I will just make two more comments. One is that the condition of the sign, if you were inclined to approve this thing, put some teeth in it, put some muscle. It says, "This would be preferred or that be preferred." Be specific. Get, don't use the excuse of the wall sign was there. Look at this as an opportunity. Also, if I have out-of-town guests, I bring them to downtown because it's mom-and-pop restaurants. That's what's special about it. Do you have, would any of you think that I would drive down here and take somebody to sourdough? That's crazy. I mean, they could go anywhere.
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Is there any other member of the public wishing to address the council on this item?
Good evening again, Kathy Lishman, City resident. I have no idea what the decision will be, but I feel compelled to speak about the sign. The central sign was charming, and this picture shows it at night. It's charming, and it was twenty-one square feet. This sign is proposed to be thirty-seven point two square feet. It's got a lot of letters in it, and it's big, and it is in a very prominent place of town. I had asked Andrew before the Planning Commission meeting, "Does the Planning Commission have the right to make the sign smaller?" He said, "Yes." "Does, do they have the right to change the color?" He said, "Yes." "Do they have the right to lower the sign?" He said, "Yes." I think all of those things should be considered. I think all of those things should be considered. He said, as to the above questions, they'd have the ability to approve the sign in a smaller size or at a location on the wall different from where requested. Revising the color or colors is possible unless the color is trademarked. I don't believe the color is trademarked now, but what happens as this, I don't even know what to call, the corporation, which will grow, what happens when it does have a sign trademarked? Does that mean that they have a right to put that in anywhere? I think there's a lot to think about in looking to the future.
Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate your comments. Is there any other member of the public wishing to address the council on this item? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, I'm going to go ahead and close. Public comment on this and bring it back to the council for discussion and possible action. Let me start with our city attorney, because there were several questions that were presented by the appellant's, or not questions, excuse me, statements, in very legal nature, and I'd like to get your opinion on those, sir, for the benefit of the entire council.
Did you have some specific ones in mind, Mr. Mayor?
I thought I saw you writing over there diligently.
I can make some general comments.
Yes, sir.
And if I don't touch upon perhaps your particular question, then let me know. And I'm going to primarily address the comments made by Mr. Solari, since this is one of the legal nature. His comments tonight, and the comments contained in his two letters which he received, one September 5th, one September 10th, pretty much accurately reflect the law. I mean, he's recited the cases there and what those cases stand for. I think where difficulty may come is in the interpretation of those cases to some extent. To say that, first of all, he made the comment that you only need one basis to deny it, and that's true. You don't have to have a multitude of reasons. He also made the statement that you can deny it based on factual public comment. You have that right, and that's true. In the cases, however, that he cited, and in all the cases that I have read, there has been common thread, and that common thread is that there is a physical change, or a physical building that's being constructed, or a change in a building, that is causing an aesthetic impact. One of them, there was a, I think it's the Harris case, there was a garage that was proposed to be razed, and the applicant was going to construct a three-story structure with a carport underneath and three-car garage, and it was very incompatible with the neighborhood. There was others where there was a commercial development that proposed in the middle of a residential development, which raised some issues regarding traffic safety and hazards, and it was deemed to be incompatible. The Georgetown case, which he cites, is one where it was proposed to have a Dollar General store in Georgetown, and it was going to be 9,000-plus square feet with a 12,000-plus parking lot and obstruct views, and there, the court found that was out of character with that nature, with the nature of the area, and agreed that that should not have been allowed, and it wasn't. You do have, as he pointed out, wide discretion with respect to this, both approving and The thing that I'm focusing on tonight, though, is something that really I hadn't heard to the detail that we heard tonight, and that is, the physical change that they're talking about is the sign. There's no changes to the building. It's the sign. So I think if you're going to deny this on the basis that it's incompatible with the characteristics downtown, you're going to have to find that an illuminated sign, and granted, we don't know what it's going to look like, but an illuminated sign is going to be out of character with that general neighborhood. And so you're going to have to look to see, what is that character? Is that a significant impact on that area surrounding that location? That, I think, is one of the key things that you're going to have to decide. Is that sign going to be a significant impact? I'm trying to think of some of the other issues that may have been raised. Oh, the issue about the general plan and the guidelines, that's, it really, as I think everybody acknowledges, unfortunate that the guidelines were inconsistent with the zoning. And it's correct, the general plan is what rules everything. But if you look at our general plan, there's nothing in there that specifically says the fast food restaurants aren't allowed downtown. The guidelines say that, but the guidelines can't change the general plan. That takes an ordinance to amend the general plan. So while there's a conflict there, and while that conflict is unfortunate, I still think that what Mr. Rivas said is correct, that there is no prohibition against a fast food restaurant downtown, based on our law, our codes as it exists today. And I'm trying to think of what else there was that you would want me to address, sir.
That was a good one. That was a, thank you for remembering that one. Thank.
But those are, based on the comments tonight.
Specific questions in the legal realm for our attorney? No. Okay. Well, first of all, before we go any further, I want to thank all of the public speakers this evening for being considerate, concise, and respectful of everybody that was speaking. It's really greatly appreciated. It's not difficult dealing with such a situation that has become so charged up and down and throughout this town. So I want to acknowledge that, because there has, that is not always the case. But I thank you very much this evening for working collectively to allow everybody's opinions to be heard. So back to this work, specific questions for staff, based on what Mr. Rivas especially has presented, a lot of background information about, the information based on what the regulations actually say. Mr. Driscoll, thank you for clarifying that the actual rule is not the development guideline, but it's actually the zoning regulations.
The general plan.
And the general plan.
Zoning cannot be inconsistent with the general.
Plan. It should not be.
Say that again.
Zoning should not be inconsistent with the general plan. But, so you have to look at the general plan, and is there a clear prohibition in the general plan against a fast food restaurant in the Central Business District? There is not. The guidelines say that there isn't, but the guidelines can't amend the general plan, is what I'm saying, without an ordinance, not by resolution.
So, in this, in this process, the planning commission approved it with a conditional, with the condition that they bring back the sign. And that seems to be a major point of contention. And so what we don't have is a sign to talk about, that's going to, may or may not impact the visual nature of the space around the bell tower. And I know Mr. Solari is sitting there thinking, well, that's a Sunstrom issue. They're deferring consideration of an element. I would tend to disagree with him a little bit. I'm not sure that that's necessarily a sequel issue, but I do believe it's an issue relating to whether or not a conditional use permit is appropriate, because does it, is it detrimental to the surrounding properties? Is that change, that, that structure, that sign, going to be detrimental? So that's certainly one of the considerations you have to make in determining whether there's conditional use permit, because you have to make a finding, as the planning commission did, that the use is not detrimental to the surrounding properties. And I say it's probably, in my mind, it's not clearly a sequel issue, because I'm not sure it's a significant impact. But it could be something considered detrimental to the surrounding properties, depending on the nature of the sign. But the CUP, it directly addresses the exterior or the signage, but we really don't have a sign to discuss.
Able to determine the level.
That's correct. Because, because the planning commission delayed that discussion until they brought back a new sign, or revised their sign. Do you understand my question?
I'm sorry. I was city manager.
Okay. So, so the planning commission delayed review of the sign until, because they did not like the sign. They did not like the red sign, the illuminated plasty.
Right.
Sign that they presented initially. And so the planning commission said, we approve it with the condition that you bring back a sign that we're going to, that we like. That, how do we address that? Because that's really the, as I see, the primary issue here. How do we address a sign that we haven't seen that's going to be the one supposed to be going back to the planning commission?
I don't have a good answer for you on that, because I don't know how you can either. Questions for Pierre? Okay, Patty, did you have any questions for?
Well, I had the same question about this sign issue.
All right.
And has it, has the applicant made an appointment to go back, I mean, to address it to the planning commission? And if so, we haven't heard anything about it. And, and I agree with Dennis that this is what it's pretty much all about right now.
Well, yeah, it is and it isn't. Let's go back, while, while they're talking in the corner. I think Pierre has clearly stated that, however outdated or eraser-marked our zoning in our general plan may be, or in need of updating, although if somebody would like to donate staff, we would gladly take them, because that's what it takes. He's pretty well proved that, despite its blemishes, the fast food is allowed, formula businesses are allowed, and he clearly demonstrated that on the slides. Is there any questions on that part of it? That was the beginnings, that was the, you know, just to, very.
I just, I thought it's something else I was going to ask. Is it, are, what are we, are we, is this a fast food, or is it a formula?
It's both.
And is it being referred to as both?
It's both.
Okay.
And that can happen. That's just the way the world is. And that's the way our current worrying is. Is it great? I'm not going to comment. Could it be better? Everything can be better. So are there any, is there any doubts there as to, because we're basically, these are the claims in the Friends of History Kingtown appeal.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, could we have just a five-minute recess?
Certainly. Okay. We will recess for five minutes. I'll call the meeting back at 9:40. I'll give you seven minutes. I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting back to order. The clerical note, the time is 9:42. Ask everybody to settle back in. We will continue to discuss this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, you're very welcome. And Mr. Driscoll, did you have some information to share with the council?
No. Nothing resulted from the break that you can share with the council.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. So, I think we actually, that was a very useful break. So I think if it's the wishes of the council, we've certainly received a lot of information, comments, public opinion, pretty detailed outline from staff as to what the actual criteria are in our existing general plan and zoning regulations. So, is there, let's have some discussion amongst ourselves as to where we would like to see this go next.
I have a couple of thoughts. One, I know we've heard talk of setting a precedent. Precedent's been set a while ago, in fact, years ago, when Quiznos, Mr. Pickles, and Starbucks were all allowed into the Central Business District. There isn't a bell tower district. There's a Central Business District, and everything within that area encompassed that, and those three were all allowed in. So we're not setting new precedent. I just want to say that. Regardless of what we do, there's no new precedent, because we've already had three fast food formula businesses in the Central Business District. So we'd have to contend with that if we were to say no, because we have set precedent. My thoughts are, this does, I think, come down to the sign, and I'd like for us, I'd like, and we should have a discussion about this, but to put some parameters on a sign tonight, and it's, you know, it'd be up to the owner of sourdough, whether he accepted it or not. These are my, sort of my initial thoughts on all this. And just one more comment, I mean, it goes back to what our city attorney said is, it's unfortunate that we had this problem with, that the guidelines were inconsistent with the ordinance. But again, ordinance, guidelines are guidelines. They are not the law. They're guidelines. And so that, that was an unfortunate error, but it doesn't negate what's in the ordinance, which is, this is allowed. And then, on top of that, I'd like to have, and I know this is already a planning commission, and it'll come to us, but I would like to have a conversation about these formula businesses going forward. But we can't apply this, this is not about applying something retroactively, it's about going somewhere prospectively. And so this is, at least where I'm, where I'm at at this point.
Thank you, Michael. Patty, did you, I'd like to.
I pretty much, I, I agree.
Let me add one thing to Michael's comment, and ask Dennis if he would like to comment. And just to clarify, it was thrown around a ton tonight, but there is no historic district. There is no blocks of Main Street that have been registered with the state or federal organizations. That is thrown around all the time. Doesn't exist. Very few structures on Main Street are registered either at the state or federal level. Very, very few. Less than probably six that I can think of, and maybe even fewer than that. So please remember that. There is no historic district. Why is there no historic district? Because a term that has not been thrown around this evening is the property owners had no desire to have a historic district and what they saw as invasive government. Now, this is 10 or 15 years ago, but again, those are, that is the world that we are dealing from. There was no will among the property owners to have the regulations that they saw as onerous on paint and facades and remodels and tenant improvements, didn't want the city or anybody telling them what to do. And Mr. Smith, Tom Smith, was a strong opponent, strong proponent of keeping government out of private property rights. So please remember, no property, no, no historic district. And the other thing is, is that the Central Business District, and thank you, Michael, for pointing out that another attorney hired for another task could probably be warning us that what you just described is exactly right. We have already clearly established fast food businesses and formula businesses in this district, which isn't just two blocks. It's clearly been defined for years as beginning at Cedar Ravine and Main Street and running west to, including what the late, great Mr. Kalfy included, down to the, what I call the Main Street Extension. That is the Central Business District. It doesn't stop at the bell tower. It doesn't stop at Mel's. It starts at Inter County Title, and it goes all the way down to the yogurt shop.
To the barbecue.
And it includes the Hog Wild, it includes Kentucky Fried Chicken. There's a historic site. No petitions being raised for that one, however. But those are the realities that this body is responsible for. That is the private property right, and through, through this whole thing, a property owner and a business proponent has sat through this abuse. And why, I, I question, you know, they've had to sit silent as people have run up and down the street laboring to prevent them from moving forward. But this, this has always been a very strong private property rights community, and that hasn't been talked about this evening. This really is at stake, is if, if we would, someone would like to buy the building, that would be great. And then we could put a bakery back in there, which would be my favorite, because that's how I remember it. But I don't have the skills to run the bakery, or the money to buy the building. So we have to deal, we have to remember that. There's a private property person out there and a, and a business applicant that we need to respect. So, Michael, thank you for giving me a chance to segue onto that, and it's because I think it's really important. Do we need to encourage the existing property owners to look at a historic district? Sure. Bring it on. I think it's very sad that a word that's thrown around so frequently is the historic town, which we very much are, that we could not keep a historic advisory committee staffed. No one was willing to show up to those meetings. We've tried twice in the 12 or 13 years that I've been on the council, and both times we've had to disband it for lack of interest.
And I sat on that, and in 2014, we did actually bring forward a recommendation for a historical district downtown. And so this is five years later, and we're still in the same place as 15 years before that.
Only with no committee.
And with no committee. So I, I live that.
I believe that, and I have heard the community and absolutely agree, the signage that sourdough company is proposing, maybe not in the big city, but frequently it was our practice to have the planning commission have a sign package brought back after the applicant had its initial review, was pretty standard practice. There would be some, some issues with signage or outdoor lighting or landscaping that were always brought back for final review and approval. So here in small Placerville, that's pretty standard operating procedure. So the thing that I've heard this evening that's caused the most concern, and I understand it absolutely, is if they were to have a sourdough sign up there where the Centro sign currently exists, and what that looks like with the history. sign currently exists, and what that looks like with the historic bell tower. And earlier this evening, I wondered if Centros was to come forward again, if the same, same concern and uproar would be created if Centros, which I kind of consider an Art Deco or modernistic design, certainly not historic hangdown. There's never been any beef on that, but I guess that's an argument for another day. I think it's time to cut to the chase on this, and I think the concerns for the historic outside of this building are very real, and for that reason, then I would be saying that this applicant is going to have to make some serious considerations to limiting any signage that goes on the outside of that building. I do not see anything above the, you know, where the current Centro sign is mounted, as being a suitable place for a franchise style business that unfortunately our existing regulations allow. So we have to look at mitigating that impact as, as much as possible. So I would say that we're gonna have to make a hard, have a hard discussion here. I do not want to see this thing move back to the planning commission, because I think that's counterproductive. And if this body would be allowed to make a recommendation, I would like to see a sign package that had a sign type that would be, there's, there's an awning around the exterior of the building, mounted at the awning elevation or lower.
I mean, not-
You have the ability to make new conditions such as that if you want to, so-
That's where I'm heading.
Okay.
So-
So not replace where the Centro sign is?
Nope. Totally new sign package, recognizing that, as was demonstrated, that the, it is a highly photographed site, and the biggest impact to the historic nature of that site, because we have a duty to the private property owner, and that's to let them operate, you know, businesses that are allowed in there by right, or, excuse me, by right and/or by condition. So, that's been pretty clearly identified. What are your thoughts on that?
I would first like to address the comments that were directed towards our staff.
Sure.
And-
I apologize for hogging the mic.
That's all right. You said some very important things there. The disparaging remarks that were directed at our staff, that they're a shill for the applicant, or for the original applicant, Sour Dough Company. I have to tell you, I've, I've been an applicant before, before the planning commission and with the, with the city, and, and they hold the line. They, they hold the line where it's supposed to be, and they follow the rules as best they can. Not as best they can, they follow the rules, because I can't tell you how many times I went into Andrew Painter, he opens up the book and points to where I can't do it. And it's, and it's, it's challenging, and you, as a business owner, you have to figure out how to comply with the rules and the codes of the city. And I, it just blows me away that anybody would, would even begin to consider our staff in that manner. And there's a lot of people in this room that don't know the person that said this, and know that, you know, it's kind of wacky. And the reality is, is that his, his comments are just one person's comments, and I don't believe it is the belief of this council, or pretty much anybody else in this room, except for maybe the people appealing this. So I want to make it clear that that is not, that is not the going thought of our, of our staff. I want to make that crystal clear. One of the important things that we're doing tonight is we're, we're gonna consider setting a precedent, actually, that we want to, to have businesses fit into our historic district. I mean, potentially, this could be the direction that goes, I don't know, we'll see how this conversation goes. But we can set a precedent that, that how we want our downtown district to look, and that it would fit in, and that would make a difference in the visual aspect of our, of our town and our community. And while, you know, Starbucks and Quiznos definitely have their thing down here, and we didn't take much umbrage to their sign package, I think that we have the opportunity to consider all businesses that go in downtown that require a special use permit. And I think that's our opportunity here, if we choose to go in that direction. So, one of the things that, that I have seen with this, with this issue, is a lot of negativity, and, and a lot of hostility pointed towards, towards the applicant, towards those that have chosen to disagree with the Downtown Merchants Association. I've had several people say they don't even want to speak up, because they feel like they are being bullied by the Downtown Merchants Association. I myself was given what I consider a threatening comment, saying that somebody would, the president himself said he would be disturbed, very disturbed, if I were to vote against this. And that's very disappointing coming from him. I, I'm a big believer in holding space for reasonable conversation, and discussing difficult issues like this, without comments like that. And it's very unfortunate that that happened. I, I actually choose to embrace people who want to shine light on the goodness in our town, who want to bring, bring community to it, and not disparage it. And I, and I appreciate that about the applicant. I'm not saying that I'm gonna vote in favor or against, I just appreciate that. One of the people I talked to prior to this, this meeting, was Carol Patton. She was on the planning commission at the time that this was created. I, I didn't know what her response was to be, because Carol Patton is a very independent thinker, and her and I have gone to town quite a bit on various issues, so I, but I, but I knew I could trust her, and give, and trust her opinion on this. And she said she had no intent to disallow, when they were working on this on the planning commission, to disallow formula businesses downtown, or fast food. Her goal was, just like their goal was with the planning commission when they dealt with Home Depot, was to build it, so that, design it, and help work with the applicant to design a business that fits our community. And that's why they put this in place, so that this, actually the planning commission had the opportunity to work with an applicant to fit it into our community, not to disallow it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Patty, comments?
You know, I don't think so. I think we've, everything's been said that needs to be said, and I, I do agree that, you know, we, we, it's not our job to tell business people and property owners what they can and cannot do. We've set the guidelines, I feel as though that they have done what they were asked to do. I do have an issue with the sign, and I, I hope that we can work out something that Mark was alluding to. However, I will say, the bell tower is surrounded by signs that are all lit up. So, you know, they talk about taking pictures of the bell tower with no signs, they're, they're out there already right now, so I don't think that that's an argument against it either.
No further comments. I, I mean, beyond the fact that I, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, in terms of, I think we need to resolve the sign issue tonight. I don't want to have to go back to planning commission, because it's just gonna end up back here anyways. So, let's, let's make a decision tonight, and-
What is the proper wording? That's what I think we're, I'm stuck with, I don't know. Mark's presented something that was different from what I was thinking. I was just thinking, you know, forget the illumination.
Mm-hmm.
Because, and I don't know, and I don't, I don't know whether is, Mr. LeBlanc, is, are they, are they under an auspices that they have to have, you know, is it part of their? I can remember losing a restaurant, because their headquarters would not allow them to change their paint color. And it was one that we really could have used here in town at the time. So I don't know what, what their law, you know, what he's governed by. Do we, can we ask him? Does he know?
Let me ask Pierre to-
Mr. Mayor, if I may-
Certainly.
Just as a starting point, I think it would help the council if you then just focus on proposed condition number five, and I'll read it, because basically, the planning commission did have issue with the sign packages as it was originally presented, and they discussed it quite thoroughly, and they actually gave some very specific direction on how they wanted to see that sign come back to them. Basically, that condition states signage is limited to that in the original application, meaning the, the dimensions of the sign, 30 inches tall by 14 feet, 10 and 1/2 inches long. Sign text is limited to Sour Dough &amp; Company, with no menu items included, so they removed that, the menu items. Sign would be preferred using earth tone and muted colors. Illumination will use soft tone lighting with front light, gooseneck lights preferred. Applicant shall return the proposed sign package to the planning commission for approval prior to occupancy. So I think, I think you have, you know, at least a starting point, you can certainly better formulate how you want the sign to be. I know the applicant is not limited to a red sign, there are other signs, we saw pictures of other Sour Dough, where the sign was white, not red. Or there's a sign that we saw, and I forget the location, where the sign was a wooden sign. So I think there's a lot of discretion on what they want to do. And when staff reviewed what was trademarked, it was essentially just the, the font, if you will, just the lettering, Sour Dough &amp; Company. Didn't have any menu items, didn't have a specific color, it was just a, you know, a black and white sign that was trademarked. So I think that allows you a lot of discretion on how you want that sign to look, without infringing on their, on their trademark.
Thank you for pointing that out, Pierre, that is an excellent starting point. And is this something that you would traditionally also work out with the applicant, as they brought this in? So if there was any questions, it would come back to the council?
Yes, typically, the way the process would have worked, should it be referred back to the planning commission, is the applicant would, would bring their proposal to staff, staff would review it, staff would have the opportunity to either recommend approval, denial, or further modifications to the commission, with the commission having the ultimate say on that, on that sign.
And that planning commission decision would be appealable to the city council?
That's correct, it would be.
All right, and I think Vice Mayor is trying to avoid that step, although that may not be advisable.
I would leave that to the city attorney, but I, I would think that the council would have the ability to basically make a decision on that sign, or the council itself could say the applicant to bring a sign package, something consistent with the direction that the council gives to staff and the applicant, and then we bring it back to you.
If you put enough detail in what your requirements are for the sign-
Mm-hmm.
Then you can possibly avoid it, having to go back to the planning, planning commission. You say, this is what we want in a sign, this, 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 and this, so that there's no wiggle room, just come back and propose something different.
So we don't have a constant-
Exactly.
Because one of my thoughts, when I was listening to the concerns of the various speakers, was the fact that, like, right now where the Centro sign is, you could almost say it makes it look like the Centro's building, because it's up fairly high on the wall. It just has that one, I think there's just that one sign, I'm looking at the picture on page two of the Stafford port. And my thought was, I've seen a lot of, I've been kind of watching for these, and with the canopy, if there was something that was mounted down at the canopy height, canopy height, or-
Under the windows?
Yes, oh yeah, mm-hmm. Not on the wall at all, but maybe mounted on the canopy itself at that elevation. I've seen some formula businesses that have actually had their signage hung underneath the canopy, just because of the aesthetics. Because it'd be some more pedestrian, friendly sign at that point, rather than proclaiming it's the Sour Dough &amp; Company building, it would be the Sour Dough Company sandwich shop.
No, I think, I, I would be supportive of that. I mean, if we wanted to put forth a, you know, to deny the, the appeal, but with the caveat on the sign being below the canopy, or with a certain size, I would, I would be supportive of that.
I honestly have a problem with that, because all the other businesses are not being made to do this, and I, if you look up and down Main Street, they're, you know, they all have their signs on their-
Through this, we've discovered that there's other formula businesses that are down there, that, because they're there, and they're there. So, I mean-
I don't, honestly, I don't object, if we're going down this road, I don't object to a sign that's higher up, not higher than it is currently, but that might be smaller in nature, and that is, the color tones match the, the aesthetics downtown, and has a more historic feel to it, rather than the bright red.
And when Pierre mentioned, he said one of their, has a wooden sign, that might be something to consider too.
I don't know why that wasn't considered.
So non, non-illuminated?
Correct.
Yep.
Goose necks are-
Yeah, or illuminated from cans.
Goose necks, yeah.
Goose necks.
Goose necks.
Okay.
So is that a motion? Somebody like to-
I don't know, we might need more detail, and are we talking sandblasted sign? A wooden, sandblasted style sign?
That's what I have on my-
It's gonna have to be submitted, we don't even know if the applicant's gonna want to be involved in this. But this is, this is the, the concerns of the community, and the concern for any impacts to the exterior of the building, seems to be based on signs. I mean, if you look at some of the old pictures of the buildings, there's a couple of bay windows and a cupola that are missing. Where did those go? Right? That's the lack of what? A lack of historic preservation? I don't know. But it's certainly not the original building.
You know, and, and I know this is-
So who do we blame? You know?
This is after the fact, but, we talk about all this historic building, I remember when Greg and Henry built that business, and they, what was presented to me, what they told me, is that they wanted to have a coffee shop, et cetera, to kind of mimic like being in Italy. And that's why they put those big sliding windows, it was like being on the street, you know? So that certainly isn't historic, if you want to really, you know, talk about that. And that's how this building was created, according, remembering my conversations with them many, many years ago.
Okay, well, that's a nice piece of history to have. Appreciate you sharing it.
Can, can we do something to the extent of a sign that doesn't exceed the current size of the Centro, is illuminated only by gooseneck, and that conforms with the, you know, architecture of the street? So that gives them some flexibility to come back with a sign package, but at the same time, it limits what, what can be put up there. Is that, is that still to make?
You may want to address lighting, you may want to address color as well.
Okay.
I mean, you've got size, and then-
Did address, didn't you say?
Lighting with the gooseneck lighting.
Gooseneck, okay.
And size would be not exceeding the current Centro size, and color would be a muted color.
What the planning commission recommended?
Earth tones.
And copy would be limited to just Sour Dough &amp; Company?
And sour, just Sour Dough &amp; Company.
And then, material that it's made out of, is that an issue you want to deal with?
I thought we'd give some discretion there.
I like the wooden thing, more than aluminum. But that's up to them.
I'm sorry, but we cannot open public comment back up.
Have we had pictures of the current, proposed sign from their-
No, I'm sorry, if I let you come up, somebody else would have to come up, and I can't, can't take, I appreciate it, but I cannot risk opening, opening that, that valve.
So, so you're proposing then that this be presented, and then it come back to us?
Smaller, lower, more in keeping with the historic nature of Main Street?
I guess what I'm trying to do is just for it to be done, unless there's, you know, a major problem at the staff level with the sign package, that it would be approved by, at the staff level, once we give approval here, unless there was something wildly inconsistent with what we've, what we approved tonight. Does that, is that-
I'm just clarifying, so our assumption is that you would put these guidelines on it, and then give staff approval for that? So it does not have to go back to the planning commission for approval of the sign package?
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay, just want to clarify.
If there were any concerns about it, then they could, the issue could be heard here at the council.
Is there an objection to sandblasted style versus not? The sandblasted style?
My only objection is that I don't think it shows up good enough. I really don't, I don't think it's, I noticed that with my signs.
One, a quick clarification on, Mr. Rivas had mentioned a number of sequel findings that he wanted us to include, and- that he wanted us to include, and will those be a part of the denial? If we were to make a motion to deny the appeal?
You can affirm, I think your appropriate action is, what is outlined is option number two, and that is to affirm Planning Commission's decision, which effectively denies the appeal, and then place additional conditions, which you're talking about regarding the sign.
Is that what you said, Pierre?
Yes, and it's in the staff report. You had the three options, and number two option, as Mr. Driscoll just pointed out, gives you the ability to deny the appeal, yet approve the conditional use permit site plan review, and modify the conditions of approval as you see appropriate.
Someone like to make a motion, if that wishes in the council?
I'll take a crack then, since I've been, so I'll move to, we approve CUP 19-01 and SPR 19-01 with modifications that include the signage, and that signage would be no larger than the current Centro sign. It would consist of earth tones, gooseneck lighting. Am I forgetting anything else here?
Like you mentioned, the color would be muted earth tones.
Muted earth tones.
Muted earth tones, and the...
Gooseneck lighting?
Gooseneck lighting, and then the type of, what it's made out of would be up to the applicant.
And then you wanted Sour Dough &amp; Company without the menu portion?
Correct, just the term, just the word Sour Dough &amp; Company.
Can I just, one more thing, location, no, at or lower than the current Centro sign, something like that?
At or lower.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Which is up there pretty high.
I think, from what I heard from some of the audience members, is that they, that this sign was so prominent in the photographs, so I think they have a point there, that maybe bringing it down a little bit would be better.
Okay.
Well, bringing it down any further, would put it on the windows?
Yeah, there's no, there really isn't.
Oh, yeah, you're right. You know that, Dennis? You are right.
It's pretty much at the lowest elevation it can be with the windows.
So you wouldn't consider putting it down at the canopy elevation? Dennis has got a great picture here, or somebody provided, somebody provided us a nice picture.
I think we just leave it up on...
It would be smaller than the existing size.
Oh, yeah, so this would, the menu wouldn't be there, so it would be...
Yeah, that is bigger than the other side, so this would be reduced in size.
My thought was to put it down there at the canopy.
Can they do the lighting still if it's at the canopy level?
Probably. It would be similar to buttercup. Buttercups are lit with goosenecks.
Do you want to say? You know, that wouldn't be bad.
I'm open to a friendly amendment.
That wouldn't be bad.
Have I not?
Except, it probably wouldn't be red, and it might not show, it's just muted colors. It might, you know, really not show as a sign at all, if it were down here.
Let me ask Pierre a question. Did you get a second? Are you finished? I'm sorry.
He hasn't been...
I think I, well, as is, I think I'm done, unless we have to add in the sequoia findings as well.
Yes, you do.
So I would add the sequoia findings.
Staff does recommend adding those sequoia findings regarding those exemptions.
Correct, so I would add those to my motion.
I'll second it.
Did you second the motion?
I just did.
Thank you. Did the clerk get that? Thank you very much. Question for Pierre. Pierre, in the application, was there any window signage proposed? I mean, Centros has got a lot of graphics on their windows, what's Sour Dough proposing?
No window signing, signage was proposed.
None whatsoever.
None whatsoever.
Okay, thank you. All right, so your motion was to...
Motion is, sign...
Based on the...
On the top, same size as the Centro sign, no larger, or smaller, it could be smaller, earth tones, and gooseneck lighting.
And the sign would be mounted at the elevation as proposed in the original application?
Correct.
Is there any other discussion?
And the, what it's made out of, one word. Is it the discretion of staff?
Discretion of staff, correct, on the, yeah, on the material that it's made of.
Material, thank you. It's a hard word to come up with.
That's tough. It's getting late, we've still got one more to go. All right, roll call. If there's no other discussion, no other questions? Pierre, do you have ample clarity as to the desires of the sign?
Yes.
And the location, et cetera, size, colors?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right, I'll ask the clerk to call a roll, please.
Mayor Acuna?
No.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor has abstained. Councilmember Varelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Motion carries three to one, and the item will come back to, well, it'll go to Pierre, and it'll be up to the applicant to work this out, based on these conditions. And I will just comment, I voted no, because I don't think, as proposed, the sign is still going to be highly visible and impactful. So, thank you very much. We have one more item to conduct, item 11.2. Let me ask the council, if anyone needs a break before we get into this?
Yes.
We will take a five-minute recess and reconvene at 10:25. If everybody would take their seat, we'll go ahead and call the meeting back to order at 10:26, and we need to hear one more item, 11.2. And with affirmed decision, it's the same basic issues filed by a different person. 385 Main Street. A request to appeal the decision by Mr. Kirk Callahan Smith.
No, I'm sorry.
Mr. Driscoll, do you have this report?
I do, sir. And first, I'd like, Mr. Smith is here, I'm assuming that because you're here, you're not pursuing your request for a continuance, or are you still want the matter continued?
Please.
Okay, so we go ahead?
No.
Okay, all right. So we don't have to make a decision on his request for a continuance?
All right.
Okay. So with that, I know the hour is getting late, but I think my staff report sets out our responses to the specific issues of Mr. Smith's appeal. One I would like to address is the ex parte communications portion of his appeal. And while I think Mr. Smith's comments are well-intended, I have to disagree with him. They are not prohibited. They're a common practice with a lot of local agencies, as pointed out in the report. Courts have usually sanctioned this particular conduct. I've cited a case, as well as a treatise that references that. However, you have to be careful with ex parte communications, and I think in the case before you, the Planning Commissioner, Mr. Friend, who actually didn't even vote, did participate in ex parte communications, and he disclosed that. The other commissioners, the chair disclosed that she had had ex parte communications, which really weren't with the applicant, and were more of a general nature. Another commissioner disclosed she had some ex parte communications with staff. I mean, that's all normal operating procedure, so I really don't think that is grounds to sustain the appeal. There were not separate hearings, and Mr. Revos can address this as well as I can. There's no requirement that you bifurcate or separate the CUP from the site plan review, so that they are separate hearings. The issues were relatively straightforward, so it wasn't a complex thing, so I don't think that is necessarily a grounds for an appeal. We've had a long discussion about the formula restaurant, fast food, and the fact that, as Mr. Revos pointed out, the code allows fast food restaurants in downtown business district. They do have, where this one was a fast food restaurant and a formula business, it did fall under the requirements for the CUP, and that hearing took place. The continuance issue is one that's totally in the discretion of the commission, and without a showing of prejudice, there really is no basis there for an appeal. Comment was made that the chair prejudged the matter, because she had prepared some remarks on it. We don't know what necessarily were in those remarks, and it just could indicate a sign of preparation on her part, and good preparation, rather than any sort of prejudgment. There's no indication that at the hearing, she had her mind made up and prejudged it, so, again, it's the issue of a fair hearing. I don't think that is supported by that claim. Conflict of interest by Mr. Revos, yes, he does have duties regarding development and within the city. He's responsible for a number of other things, but again, there's no evidence that he had any beneficial interest in sourdough, or that he was biased in his approach to the project. Typically, staff will take a stance on something, for the most part, that's part of their job, and taking a stance or a position on something doesn't mean that you're biased or prejudiced, or have a conflict of interest for that matter. It's typical to allow an applicant to approach the podium again when public comment is closed, because there are questions that arise during the deliberations of the hearing body, and to ask the applicant those questions is perfectly proper. The allegations otherwise are very difficult to answer, because they're somewhat conclusionary and reflect the opinion of Mr. Smith, and while he's certainly entitled to his opinion, I don't believe that those are necessarily grounds for appeal. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Thank you, John. Are there any questions for the city attorney?
No.
No, all right. Then I'm going to go ahead and ask the applicant, Mr. Smith, to go ahead and...
Somebody else wants to stay here for another two hours, so...
If you could pull the microphone up, Kirk, thank you, Kirk. Good evening.
I'm not sure about the posture of this continuance request, because I thought it was denied two meetings ago. Wasn't it?
No, it was not, and let me clarify that then, because if you want the matter continued, the council could continue it, but I have to tell you that if they do, their alternatives are to continue it to the next council, regular council meeting, which would be more than 60 days beyond the filing of the appeal, and by code, then the Planning Commission decision is affirmed. The council would have to set a special meeting to hear it within that timeframe.
You know, and I understood that last time, and it was just a fluke, that my schedule and new facts developed after I agreed to your request for continuance, and if I hadn't, we could have disposed of it before. This is moot, because, you know, you're going to deny both appeals. Number one, appellate courts, the Supreme Court and others, as you can agree, do hear multiple appeals at the same time, two or more appeals, at the same time, when they have same or similar issues, and there's a lot of economy in doing it that way. So it does happen, and it just took me so, my surprise, what we do at this serio, let me go back over the issue of the due process issues, and that's what I used. It wasn't bias, and fairness, and so on. It's the language of the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments, and that's what ex parte communication issues are about. So in that article, it points out that the reason it's prohibited is because you don't have a chance to know what the other side said or did. You don't know what their argument was, how it was presented. Now, I want to remind you that you had a hearing a few months ago on 948 Oak Terrace, I believe it was, and the very same issues I've raised were raised there, and you reversed the decision of that body in denying that family the chance to have their car parked. It included the need to have recused herself, because one of the members had actually sought to buy that property, and then there was, there was some information given to the commission that the party didn't see in advance, wasn't a chance to respond. So it's the same kind of issues that were raised, they're about due process. And the reason I cited that article was because the staff gave that article to them, and it was a number, it's significant that they hadn't read it. Again, as you said, John Driscoll, the fundamental rule on ethics is to avoid the appearance of impropriety. Now, a municipality can and should have offices that handle economic development, promoting, no matter how you caption it, promoting business in the community, bringing new folks in, is wonderful, and I can't think of anyone more better suited than Pierre Revos. The political background, the sales skills, when it comes to a number of different issues, subject matters, I would go to Andrew Painter and Pierre Revos the first thing, but you have to talk about the appearance of impropriety. You didn't need to have the applicants there. Pierre argued it for it. Look at the tape. The tape, one of, requested the continuance, and Pierre argues, no, that would be a problem, because the applicants under pressure on a timeframe under its lease. Has any of you seen the lease? I haven't, as a staff, I don't know. Would smart people have a lease that doesn't have a contingency in it that says, "This will be voided if I'm unable to get a, an application for operating this kind of business"? I don't know. That's not in there. So that's an example where it projects the appearance of impropriety. Now, tell me that this has been done before, and some jurisdictions to it. Yeah, yeah, it does, but it's caused problems. It's been raised often, and one of the earliest examples is the Department of Agriculture, that had a congressional mandate, they were responsible for promoting agriculture in this country, increased production, price support, things like that. And at the same time, who is it that provides meat inspectors? Now, we hear about this conflict whenever we have some E. coli outbreaks and things like that, but that's an old one, and that's been around, and it's generally discouraged. And some of them exist because no one's challenged them yet. For example, Elrodoto County, I understood, had somebody responsible for economic development that was also responsible for enforcing some specific rules related to the environment, regulatory matters about public safety. And it puts you in kind of an awkward spot, doesn't it? So it's a sincere issue, and I don't care how you rule, it doesn't matter. I would point out a couple of other things that might be helpful. Mark Acuna correctly pointed out there was a lot of resistance to the idea of government controlling, but I wouldn't characterize it the way Mark did, because I hadn't seen him at any of the meetings that I went to on that subject. The issue is this. The Historic Advisory Committee insisted that the Secretary of Interior's guidelines on historic preservation be mandatory, not guidelines. Those guidelines actually state that they are mandatory only for federal properties. Why is that significant to someone like myself, who'd be involved in property ownership issues? If I have some old windows that need to be replaced, I can replace them with storm windows, triple pane, argon gas, that have wood frames and look just like the ones before, and that should be appropriate. But under what the Advisory Committee came up with, it was mandatory, and I lived in a building that was in an historic district, and it was made of wood, because it was during the Civil War, and they couldn't use brick then, or something. So there was this orange bubble glass, and if any of that broke, they had to replace it with the same kind of glass. And that's arduous, but what I saw at business meetings is that it was general enthusiasm, because our good staff, Andrew Painter in particular, had a meeting here, in this very room, on historic preservation. It got a tremendous turnout throughout the area. And two of the conclusions made, based on a lot of studies in the field from those experts, is that number one, when you have an historic district, you increase property... experts, is that number one, when you have an historic district, you increase property values. That's what he said. And I'm not going to dispute that. Likewise, when you have an historic district, you also improve the tax base. So that's what they said. Listen, I could go into some of these other issues. If they want to appeal it, I'd be glad to join them because I think they're serious issues. And just to let you know, last time when I presented the issue of this ex parte communication, I understand, and Pierre can correct me, but the, the chair pointed out that she since did a simple Google search and found a whole series of articles from the League of California Cities about that very issue. And they were going to raise it in the future about it. So it was taking a, a different assessment of the very issues before. I think they're legitimate to raise, and when you raise different, you know, sometimes some minority view could be the, the minority view could be the majority view later on. Al Gore and the Holmes made a career out of that stuff. Listen, we don't need to stick around, rule any way you want, but those issues are legitimate. I would love to argue with you, but I don't think it's going to get us anywhere. If somebody wants to do it in court, I'd be glad to do it. Because the characterization, just the way you started the meeting, a half hour to hear from this, from the city describe and characterize, or mischaracterize, as they would argue, the position of the appellant. This issue before you was very simple. You were responding to an appeal, period. And I think it's much more efficient if the appellant speaks for him or herself and not have somebody characterize it. Again, I think the way, the issues that, John, you correctly described my position. But your description is not what I saw in that staff report. It's quite different. So again, your fundamental rule is to avoid the appearance of impropriety. And as far as my father, it's a very amusing story. You're absolutely right, a strong libertarian. And you know what the city council did? You appointed him to the planning commission! What sense does it? I would love to get the tapes for that, please. They'd be very entertaining. I know. But Dennis, when you're talking about criticism of the staff, break it down. If someone has a criticism of an issue, that's an issue, it's not the person. Because again, Pierre is exceptionally talented. I thought it's a perfect job. But it creates an image of a conflict when you have the person involved in economic development come in there. When there's, and is it necessary? You already got one good person. Anyway, let's go home.
Thank you.
Is there any questions for Kirk? Mr. Driscoll, did you have any response?
No.
Okay. Dennis, Michael? All right. Thank you, Kirk. I'll go ahead and open public comment on item 11.2. Is there any member of the public wishing to address the council on this item? Oh, I'm sorry, I should have let Sour, you're still here. Thank you. Good evening again.
Good evening. Dana LeBlanc, once again, appellate number two. Want to address the, the points you made. Not once in that discussion did I hear the name Sour Dough &amp; Co. And yet, he's appealing my coming into town. So it's kind of striking to me that the issue that is brought before you has nothing to do with my business, has to do with issues with the city, and it gives them a forum to do that. I just think that's not fair to me.
Thank you for your comments. Pardon me for not overlooking your opportunity to speak. Now I'll ask if there's any member of the public that would like to address this item. Good evening again, Sue.
Good evening. So it's pretty much a given, you're going to do a ditto on this, I'm sure, when we're done with the conversation. But I am quite distressed. This is not personal, and I hope Dana understands that. This is planning law, general plan, the things allowed by use, and the concern for downtown and the opening the door to franchise fast food restaurants. I would be happy if Dana came down without the franchise. He would be very welcomed, but the contention that now is within our downtown, it's not going to go away, it's going to get worse. And I guess I have to appreciate the council for that. And there's something in the ordinance, and I couldn't find it, but if I remember reading from the planning commission, I don't think you can regulate trademark signs in your documents. So if this sign is all trademark, are you going to come back after this has all been worked out, and they're going to come back and say, this is trademark, and your code says you have to accept it as it is? So I hope that maybe in this deliberation, you might consider if that prevents you from having what you did, is going to get thrown out because that's not allowed. And then, according to the council's logic, like I said, any fast food restaurant can now be allowed by right in the central business district, which to me is ludicrous. And to say that your development guide, which is the implement, implementation program contained within the city's general plan, it's right in the first section of this document, means nothing, and it's a mistake, and we, we missed up on it. If you notice, fast food restaurant is not allowed in anything except for the commercial and highway commercial. And that is because the highway commercials is built for fast food restaurant, traffic, car, and all those things. And if you read through each one of those, I'd submitted all of that to the planning commission. I laid it out specifically that each of these were used, commercial and highway commercial, even with that, a fast food restaurant is only allowed with a conditional use permit. And so now what you're saying is the central business district, which is more protected than those two districts, as spelled out in the, in ordinance 1597, it's allowed by right to have fast food restaurants. Welcome Taco Bell, McDonald's, and every one of those because that's what you just approved in your last action. And I'm very discouraged by this with, that you, again, would not listen to the whole, the community, the, the majority of the merchants downtown for the one that's not here. I think that's really sad. And I hope that when I'm done, that it's bad enough that you continue to go along with changing the unique character of Placerville, and to then go, you have the power, you're the stewards, you're the ones that get to make the decision. But then to turn around and be derogatory to those that are trying to protect these elements is really not necessary. So I asked in your next deliberation that you restrain from being derogatory towards certain members of the public, and just focus on what's in front of you. And that's basically, from now on, fast food is welcome in these two blocks of what was supposed to be protected for its unique character, and that's all on you. And I do want to mention Hogwild is not in the CBD district. It stops at the Netting Building, and it goes down to two buildings past CNH, just for clarification. And I guess that's it. And we all kind of know where you're going to go, and thanks for your time.
Thank you, Sue. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on this item? I would ask you to, due to the hour, let's get the clock reset. We will limit our comments to three minutes, please.
I'll make it, I'll make it much shorter than that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to comment...
Could you state your name for the record?
Diana Anderly.
Thank you.
I, I wanted to comment that the general plan mandate that you do look at a special way of processing be carried out, I got a sort of a, an answer, well, if you get the staff time, but you've already asked the staff to come back with something. And I think, obviously, if you come back with something that you can all agree on and include the public, it's really essential. You don't need to fight every time, you know, there, you've got a precious commodity there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wishing to address the council on item 11.2? Seeing no one else approaching, I'll go ahead and close the public comment, bring it back to the council for our discussion in action. Is there any questions or comments? Someone, questions for staff? Let me go ahead and make one observation, then. It's, may not seem believable, but actually, the door, as far as I've been educated in the past, and then again this evening with the refresher course, the door is, there is no door. Fast food could come in with a conditional use permit, formula restaurants are currently allowed. And I had forgotten that when we did the lower Main Street connector, that planning staff at that time had, with a thought that they would go down even further west. Unfortunately, that would be, that would be, I think, a better spot for some things to happen, but it hasn't happened. But there is no opening or closing of a door. But what you have done is you have uncovered that there is, again, reminding us that there is no historic district, that these two blocks or four blocks are not protected right now. And that probably is not the way we want to see it. I know it's not the way I would want to see it. And we've tried before unsuccessfully to go back through like the whole historic district thing, but that is a huge undertaking. Perhaps what this, if nothing else has uncovered, is the fact that there may be the need to go back and address, maybe not in all four or five blocks, depending on your measurement, but the main core blocks, which would be Sacramento Street to, say, Cedar Route, or at least Bedford, that we would not want to have formula and fast food. But that's going to take an action that will be a planning commission process, public hearing there, and bring it back, and bring it to the council as another public hearing. I would be, after we're done with this, I'd be willing to request that you give that direction to staff. But is there any further discussion?
I was just going to mention, you did already direct the planning commission to look at outlawing formula based business in the downtown, in the CBD.
What is their status on that, Pierre? Do you know?
Well, staff was waiting for the conclusion of Sour Dough. We didn't want one or the other driving one or the other. So staff will be bringing an item to both the planning commission and the Planning Economic Advisory Committee for recommendations, and then we'll come to the city council with a menu of different options. And then you can further direct staff and pass a resolution intent to amend the code, and we can seek it, whatever is the council's discretion on further regulating formula business within the CBD.
Okay. And again, it probably won't seem like much, but that's exactly what needs to happen, and this is, this process has uncovered that. So if nothing else, we'll get the opportunity to properly address the concerns of the community and have it clearly identified.
Pierre, did you say, when is it going to the, to the two committees? If I missed it, I apologize.
No, I did not give, give any date certain, but now that we've passed this hurdle, we will then prepare to agendize those items with the planning commission and the...
So it'll be the, it'll be the next couple of months, I would assume?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So... Sooner rather than later.
Sooner rather than later. All right. Is there someone, if there's no discussion, would somebody like to make a motion on the appeal that's before us, item 11.2?
So this, this recommendation, number one, deny the appeal and affirm the decision of the planning commission, kind of counters what we already did. So we just...
Good point. Yeah, it does. Perhaps you should just deny the appeal.
Deny the appeal.
If that's your inclination.
Right.
Yeah.
I would move that we deny the appeal.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please. The motion is to deny the appeal.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor has recused herself, and Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Motion carries for one absinthe. Thank you very much. And with that, there being no other business scheduled this evening before the city council, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting to our next regularly scheduled meeting on September 24th, 5:30 closed session. Thank you, and good night.